And this is closet.
Thank you. Okay, there. All right, let's go ahead and call this Livingston City Commission meeting on June fourth at five thirty-five to order. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Nudes.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Willich.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyons is.
Excuse, yes.
You have more.
Thank you. All right, well, let's start at the top of the agenda and we will start the meeting. Let me just do this on my screen is correct, okay? We'll go ahead and start this, start the meeting with a public comment. This is public comment for items that are not on the agenda or consent items. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. All public comments throughout the meeting are timed at four minutes, so you'll have four minutes to make your public comments. And we can get started. Sign in at the front, so thank you Leslie.
Yep, good evening, Commissioner. Leslie by the Livingstonary Chamber, just wanted to kind of give a recap on this Saturday, which went absolutely incredible and without incident, it was packed. Could use a little bit more room, I guess. But the businesses unfounded remarks out of one business, but the rest of the businesses did incredibly well. And the wagon rides, I actually gave a hundred and eighty-one rides to the museum and the museum had over three hundred visitors at Living History Day, so incredibly successful. Living History Day kicking off the summer here in Livingston, Montana. And we have a lot of great events coming up, so I'll be back up here in front of you at least one more time. The parade, we're kind of getting ready for that. The county commissioners are going to be in the parade and just kind of throwing it out there, city commission being that it's a one hundred year parade. Think about representing and being in front of your community would be pretty great. Mr. Willich's vehicle will be in it with him. With the governor, so there are many opportunities, we do have another award winner, we could use another vehicle. You know, just being a part of the parade and part of your community, so I'll leave it at that, but thank you very much.
Thank you Leslie. Others, a pub. General public comment.
If I'm here, I'm going to talk. No. I, I just wanted to say a few things, I did attend those events and they were great. And I'm glad that you continue those. I live at four oh eight Brookline Street, Unit D. And again, we need to do.
Will you tell your name too, please, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, Nancy.
Thank you Nancy.
Now, we need to do something. This is my theory, before we do any more housing projects that were supposed to be affordable. Well, it's not affordable, but Mile Street is a disgrace, it looks terrible, I think Grant has seen it. And it's muddy and there have been accidents there, you could have a lawsuit if we don't take care of it. And I mean, I don't know, but I'm not on that street, but it's also part of our condo association. And it's a continual concern and a continual turnover of owners too because of the difficulty. Could we not work something out on that? And then the, I used to live on eight ten East Calendar and I mention that only because I constantly drive by there because that was my family home. And there is a national food register sign, it was listed on the national register as well as the one on the corner of H and Calendar. And those places were just terrible and it used to be that there was a requirement that you took care of your lawn and things and the weeds are about the side. And it, I mean, it's just awful. And for me, this is my belief that before we start any new projects, we need to clean up the projects we have. And, and that's, you know, and lot of times you can do that by giving a good incentive. Rewarding people works better than negative, and I think there's some way. I don't know, reduction in taxes or whatever, but whatever you could do on it, bringing them here. Honoring them, put it in the newspaper, you know, positive, I was a teacher, positive is better than negative. And I have been naked, but I just wanted to say behalf. And if the weather is good, I come out, if it's not, and rain doesn't bother me, I lived in Seattle for many years. So rain and wind does not keep me home, you know that, thank you.
Thank you Nancy.
Always good to see you.
Anyone else in the room for comments not on the agenda this evening?
This is for you and then the rest go to the but you get those two, those are yours.
I'm gonna give them to Grant.
I'm just doing this because I think I'm out of time. Patricia Grabo, two oh four East Calendar Street. I've been a lifetime environmentalist. Started young. At the very least as an environmentalist, the following should have been done at Miles Park by noon. In the mind of people like me, the proposed wellness center at Miles Park have, have been called by many a corporate land grab. Gratefully, this commission city manager did not put it forward in two thousand sixteen, the former city manager and some staff said it was a done deal. But there's several questions if the city is not considering this land grab mentality to continue. Is the primary cash question why the city manager has not brought up a request of the Miles family? To deed restrict both Miles Park and Secretary Park for the city commission. As you know, I like our city manager, but he said he would take this request before this body for consideration. It will cost us nothing and assure this community that this will never again happen to Miles or Secretary Park. They're unique in this situation since we've just been through what we've been through. And in addition, you don't have to have a study to put back the Miles Park sign that was taken by, taken down by the last city manager and actually hidden on the city property. By the way, the Miles family donated that thirty-two plus acres for the park for a dollar. The current city manager gratefully found that sign and it belongs back up. That we have the staff to do that. You don't have to be have a city commission take out that erratic cement slab that stayed there for four years. In the middle of a park that used to be the, it used to be the basis of our skate park. We got rid of that old park four years ago. There is no reason for that concrete slab to still be there. There is no excuse for the graffiti on the left side of the front door to stay after multiple requests to remove it. Lyndy said she would, but it did not happen. Are we looking at another land grab from Miles Park? You do not, it does not have to cost much for a conversation for solar energy heating of that three point two million dollars civic center. Especially if the roof needs work anyway, why aren't we in conversation on that? There's no excuse for conversations by the city staff and city commissioner about fixing us. The civic center since it's been continually asked for by Park County Historic Society, downtown organizations, individual artists, church groups and environmental groups. Groups have even offered to pay for things like painting. And why are environmental groups not contacted to lease the offices at the civic center once the wellness center is built? And this city administration, I like admiration, and commissioner side types is pretty fast. Have said they are interested in the well-being of the environment. Maybe this is an overlook, but consider what happened during the parks. Caring outlined in the letter to Greg Anthony and I have just given that to the city manager only. Since it involves staff, there is reason or concern. And I am expressing that concern.
Thank you Patricia. Anyone else in the room for public comment for items not on the agenda? And I don't see anyone, anyone online, is there anyone online that would like to make comment? I am not seeing anyone, so we'll go ahead and close general public comment. All right, moving on to consent items. Commissioners, is there any of the consent items that you would like polled?
I would like to pull A.
Okay, anyone else?
Did you want to pull E?
Okay. I'll go ahead and I'll pull E.
It's a don't do it again.
All right, so we're gonna pull A and E. Do I have a motion for B through D?
Make motion through action items, B, C, and D.
Motion by Schwartz, second by Willich. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Vice Chair Nudes, do you want to start with A?
Yeah, I just have a couple of. Ooh, one of mine was in the claims, but that's okay. It wasn't a change, it was a question.
Okay.
Um, I'll start with A though. I just wanted to address page eight, the discussion of direction regarding commission and listening, commission listening sessions. I know that Mr. Gager was gonna bring a plan back to us, but I do want I would appreciate if the minutes reflected that we did come to consensus that our weekend commission and listening sessions were going to be two commissioners and not a quorum. And that the farmers markets, we did want to have notice so that commissioners could go, since many of us go to the farmer's market anyway. And since Mr. Gager was talking about having themes for the weeks anyway, it would be pretty straightforward, like one topic agenda.
Can we reflect that in the notes?
We absolutely can, and you know, just I think I had heard that we would do one Saturday morning a month. And so please know we are working on that and arranging locations and at the next meeting we'll bring back.
Great.
Kind of that plan for you.
Okay, anything else on?
No, I just had a thing about claims, but I was thinking it was with A.
If it's a question, I'm happy to.
Do you want to go now?
Do you want me to do it before a motion on A?
Let's do a motion and then you can ask that question, is that okay?
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion if you're ready.
I am.
To approve action I may with the suggested amendment.
In a second.
Second.
A motion by Nudes and a second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, so Vice Chair Nudes, I should go ahead and ask your question on B, but that's already been passed, but.
Yes, and it's not, it wouldn't be a change or an edit anyway, just a question.
Sure.
Page thirty-nine and forty of the claims, Northwest Energy section is all zeros. But it's in the claims, and so I was just looking for clarity, I mean, what's happening there?
I, yes, I, I noticed that also and asked our how to concentrate a clerk, yes, it's, we didn't get free energy through the month, while some of those accounts such as the pool and some of the other cemetery related accounts didn't see service because they're related irrigation, we had the gun service, a great many of those accounts, the payments in the last month were misapplied by Northwestern Energy, and so we're working through a big reconciliation with them to ensure that our payments were applied with proper accounts and so just as many Livingston residents may have billing issues sometimes with the power company, occasionally the city does also.
Yeah, thanks, so it's not like an error in the, it's not a city error, it's a Northwestern error.
Yeah, and we're working with that to reconcile our payments.
Thanks, great. That's the only question I had about that, it was an anomaly, usually those names are quite large.
Yep.
Thank you.
I read this packet online and I wonder, I usually, I would have noticed, thank you for.
There's five of us.
Yes. Okay, and then I asked to have a consent item E pulled, Mr. Gager, we were given a, just an updated contract, he said that maybe Mr. Hess had worked to tighten us up with the property owner, but wondered if you could just give us a gist of what was changed.
Yes, the, the agreement that was handed out at the start of the meeting really is in, in principle, the same as what is in the packet, however, there were some clauses related to the entirety of the agreement amendment and invalidity that the city attorney added, so I'm happy to open him up for any questions that you may have.
Great. Can you, Mr. Hess, can you just head on what you changed quickly?
Yeah, so in addition to what Grant mentioned, I wanted to make sure that this was binding on whoever the estate sold the property to. And so I, I wanted to include language in there. So then in the future, if the new owner isn't aware of this obligation, the city doesn't have to get into some dispute with the new owner as to connect into the system, so I changed the agreement so that made sure that whoever they sold the property to is bound by these same requirements. So I ran that by Joseph Motors, who is in the estate, and they thought they're acceptable. And he was gonna have, oh, I understand them, PRs were gonna sign it on behalf of the estate.
Okay.
That's I just that's why I wanted, on behalf of the city, I wanted to make sure we didn't have to get into some going around.
Keep chasing people.
Yeah, thank you.
And they were acceptable.
Right, thanks Mr. Hess. Right, any questions, any further questions for Mr. Hess on that? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve consent item E. A second. Okay, by Nudes, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Want to introduce the intern.
Yes, please do that, I would love you to do that.
School year and this is Cheyenne Tyler and she's working for me this summer, she does academic soccer scholarship. Built school and she wants to study pre-law, so I'm the introducer.
Thank you Cheyenne, and congratulations, and thank you for being here with us this evening.
Real smart lady.
Must be, City of Livingston.
And congratulations on graduation on Sunday. Okay.
And congratulations on the intern.
Yeah.
For you too, yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on then to proclamations. And so we have a proclamation of the city of Livingston. City Commission declaring June eighth, twenty twenty-four as Family Health and Fitness Day in the city of Livingston. I don't see any folks in the room tonight, so we'll just move forward and read this. Whereas Family Health and Fitness Day observed the second Sunday, Saturday in June is an important occasion dedicated to promoting the significance of parks and recreation and fostering the health and wellness of our communities. And whereas the physical, mental, and social benefits of regular physical activity are well documented and parks and recreation facilities provide vital spaces for residents to engage in exercise, sports, and other physical activities. And whereas the city of Livingston is proud to support a robust parks and recreation system featuring fourteen parks, a city civic, a civic center of city pool and all dedicate, all dedicated to the public use and enjoyment. And whereas the success of these facilities and programs is made possible through the dedicated effort of the city of Livingston's Parks Department and Recreation Department employees who have whose hard work and commitment ensure that our parks and recreational facilities are well maintained, self and safe and welcoming for all residents and visitors. And whereas on this day, families are encouraged to come together to participate in a variety of health and fitness activities such as walking, running, cycling, yoga, and other recreational pursuits, taking full advantage of the resources available in our parks and community centers. And whereas supporting and investing in local parks and recreational services is essential for creating and for creating and maintaining vibrant, active, and healthy communities for people of all ages and abilities. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the city of the Livingston City Commission, I carry kale chair, do declare June eighth, twenty twenty-four to be Family Health and Fitness Day in Livingston, Montana, further, I encourage community members to celebrate the importance of parks and recreation and keeping our communities healthy and active, let us commit to utilizing these invaluable resources to enhance our physical fitness, well, mental wellbeing, being, and overall quality of life, sign this fourth day of June, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Gager.
This Saturday looks like it'd be a beautiful day to hit the parks, so I, yeah, everyone would do it.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Gager. We'll go ahead and then and move on to our action items tonight, we have no scheduled public comment. So we will start with resolution five one three zero. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, giving notice that the city commission has completed its primary budget in the amount of thirty million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the fiscal year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-four and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, FY twenty twenty-five. That the budget is on file and available for public inspection on the internet at www dot LivingstonMontana dot org. And calling for a public hearing for approval of the final budget and making operations, Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Kale, the item before you is a follow-up to the conversation that we started in the last meeting where I gave a somewhat brief overview of the, of the budget, went department by department through, through the budget and so you know, as we, as we discussed in that last meeting, was not expecting any, any conversation or deliberation decisions at that meeting, hopefully now that you folks have had two weeks to start to review the several hundred pages. You may have some questions, I, I am happy to run through the presentation again if you would like. But also recognizing that, that we just went through that, I'm happy to also not. And so I, I will stand for any, any questions you may have. And, and just, you know, for folks who may be tuning in for the first time, you know, before I turned over for any questions, wanted to you know, at least hit some of the high points and, and remind everybody that the budget really is our, our most strategic tool here in city government. Because what gets funded gets done, and in that regard, you know, I have chosen to continue prioritizing implementation of the growth policy, and so we have areas that we funded that, that are similar to FY twenty-four, including our land use recommendations. Where we are providing funding to the planning department to continue the, the review of the zoning code and subdivision regulations. In addition to the gateway overlay zone work that is in progress. And, and, and so we, in addition to a hundred and twenty-five thousand carried forward from the current budget, we're adding forty thousand to help support the planning department to, to carry out this work. The, the second of our growth policy priorities are the place making and community character. And, and to, to that end, we've, I've recommended appropriating a hundred and eighty-six thousand to expand the treatment of unpaid roads, a, a project that began on a pilot basis out in Green Acres this last spring, about a year ago now almost. As we wrapped up the original sewer project there and, and those roads and that treatment seems to be holding up well, so we are proposing expanding that out over the next several years with the hope of, of getting rid of our untreated gravel roads here in the city of Livingston. And, and like I said, a multi-year project there, similarly, out of the Trails and Active Transportation Plan in conjunction with both local funding and state funding from House Bill three fifty-five. I'm recommending a hundred and forty-five thousand to complete the design and installation of rapid flashing beacons in the Park Street corridor. Including at both Main and Geyser, two, two very common intersections that have some pedestrian conflicts. And then using some, both state and local funding again, recommending forty-four thousand to, to continue the investment in the urban forest, not just to plant trees, but also to complete the tree inventory and continue our work to remove hazard trees, both in the right of way and, and in our parks. And, and again, you, you folks finalized our, our logo in the, the last meeting, and so we're carrying forward some funding to move forward in the, the development of wayfinding cultural and historic signage throughout the city. And that project actually has already started in the last two weeks. And then our, our third priority from the growth policy is housing. And I am recommending that we provide twenty-five thousand to continue the work of, of the housing coordinator position who has been helping the city on both policy and, and application reviews over the, the, the last nine months or so, almost ten, and has, has been a helpful addition to the team. And then our, our fourth growth policy priority area is, is resiliency and resiliency takes many, many forms. Perhaps, you know, most most notable here, we tomorrow will have the Silver Jackets, I believe they probably got into town tonight, might already be here. But tomorrow we will really kick off our field work with the, the Silver Jackets team, which is a federal, state, local, interagency flood management, flood mitigation project. And the team will be, this is our high water time of year, as you know, and so the team will be evaluating the levee and the existing flood control devices over the next week and a half as we embark on this study to assess the impacts of a potential breach of the levee in a, in a high water situation. And that will help us plan for our future mitigation and response efforts. In addition to that, recommending a hundred thousand to support the establishment of a global crisis response team in conjunction with our, our partners at Park County and Livingston Healthcare. And just this morning had some very fruitful conversations in that regard, and I'm very excited the, the direction that, that we are headed there. And this hundred thousand again will be paired not only with, with Park County and Livingston Healthcare funds, but, but state funding as well to provide some much needed support to our first responders. And then similarly, recommending that we continue our support of the warming center. And, and also our partnerships with Montana State University to help with our, our economic resilience. And as I, as I mentioned in the, in the meeting last, last meeting. We've also, I am recommending a number of investments in equipment for staff and, and also that we convert three part-time seasonal positions in the in the streets department into a full-time position to provide a, a higher level of service year-round for snow removal and, and street repairs. And, and then similarly on a, a staff level, we are instituting in recognition of the workload in the rec department, we've I've recommended bringing on a quarter time pool manager to help relieve our recreation director of some of those responsibilities. And, and ensure a, a good experience at the pool for everyone. Citywide, as you know, we have, we have negotiated collective bargaining agreements with our three unions. And this year, while, while last year we focused on, on, you know, salary and wage compensation for employees. This year our, our focus is on both improvements to the benefits program as well as a, a review of the the incentive and kind of merit pay component for our employees as well. And so we have several of those improvements funded and, and really I've spent the, the last two weeks kind of already implementing some of this with outreach meetings during our, our enrollment to help improve the benefit experience of our employees and and I think actually that work already is, is, is paying off, so with that, I am happy to stand for any questions the commission may have. And I'm happy to run through the presentation.
So commissioners, first I'll ask, would you like Mr. Gager to run through the presentation again?
No.
No, okay, I just want to give you that opportunity, okay, so questions? No. Okay. I just want to give you that opportunity. Okay. So, questions?
Well, I'll go. Uh, I just realized there's one question that you were going to answer for me before the meeting. So I'm going to put a pin in that. Because you needed time. So we'll come back to that one later. But there's questions I'll ask you now. Um, so I had brought up at the last meeting, um, the water tiers, like the water rate tiers. And hoping to get some feedback since that change was implemented. Is that something that you can do now? Or do you want more time to put information together before you present that to the commission?
You know, I am, I'm happy to bring back, uh, some information at the, the second reading of the resolution. The, um, uh, the finance director and I spent some time looking at that, um, since the last meeting. And, um, the, what I think we saw was that the, the timing of the resolution being passed in August um, meant that we, the new rates didn't really roll out until September, which is really after the high water season had concluded. And so in the, uh, in the nine, almost ten months of, of billing since, since September, we haven't seen any, you know, very dramatic differences in water usage amongst the tiers. Um, and, and so I, I don't, I, it seems like perhaps it may be too early to draw many conclusions um, on the, the impact to usage from the tier B system.
I'm really just interested in, like, other times that we've changed policy. Sometimes there were unintended consequences that we learned. And so making sure if there are any, we improve the policy as a commission. So that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. So we, we did the, the one unintended consequence that, um, that we saw was actually related to some of our mobile home parks and be, because they have, um, multiple residences that, that are in them. Um, they sometimes kick into a, a higher tier than, uh, their, you know, kind of comparative residences that aren't in a community park like that. And so, uh, we are looking at our regulations to, um, really confirm that we have the ability to, um, charge them. You know, based on the, the per household average of what their consumption is, right? So, uh, that, that's really the unintended consequence.
And to be clear, that was the intention of the original policy that was passed, like, not to target mobile home parks. Um, I have two other questions, actually. Um, one, we touched on it a little bit, and I wondered if there was anything you wanted to offer. Um, there were. When I think about the last budget and this budget, there were a couple of changes to the organizational structure that you made that were significant in terms of, um, meeting the needs of the commission and also meeting the needs of community members. One was, we'd been asking for a city clerk position. The second was, our rec department actually wasn't a department. And so you recommended we make it a department. And so that was a very noticeable change. Could you offer some feedback on how those reorganizational? What do I, what's the word I want to use? The, um, reorganization of certain pieces or positions like have impacted service to the community?
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to reflect on that. And actually, I think the third, a third somewhat reorganization that we did last year was related to code enforcement as well.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Sorry, Helen. Yeah.
And, um, so, uh, yeah, uh, on the, you know, certainly I think the, the city clerk, um, side as, as you've seen here, uh, recommending bringing that up to a full-time position. Um, you know, I, city, I'm, I'm a former city clerk myself, uh, so I can say clerk work is, uh, the nature of it is the, the more you do, the more you find there is to do. And so I, I think we have, uh, we have found that to be true. Um, we really expanded the, uh, the use of our, our digital files and digital database um, and document management storage system. And so that really, uh, actually has a lot of efficiencies as far as when public records requests come in or other research needs to be performed. And so, um, you know, the, the clerk that we have in place, I think, is, is very eager um, to, uh, be involved in digitization of records. And so, uh, you, you may know, we have a room over at the, uh, the Shane Center. And, um, and also, uh, another storage unit that's maintained by the city court, um, for record storage. So I'm, I'm optimistic in the coming years that we will be able to hopefully get rid of, uh, a lot of that paper, those paper records um, and, and digitize some of that. Um, and, and so, yeah, like I said, the, the, the more you do, the more there is to do in city clerk land. So that's been, um, really, it, it, there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained there in clerk's office. Um, and we're making good progress. Uh, you know, as far as the, the recreation department, uh, you know, the, the director there, I think, um, is, is really, uh, stepping into the role very nicely, although she's been in it for nine years. Um, just, we haven't called her director before. And, uh, I think she's, uh, you know, really starting to, to spread her wings and, and think about her programming a little bit differently. I think the community will see some, uh, changes down at the civic center. Uh, just adding some, uh, different equipment into the, the civic center. Uh, here in the coming weeks, we'll do some, uh, crossways basketball courts, so we can have some more programming down there. And then the, uh, the benches that are currently on the north's, north end opposite the stage, we will extend those as well along the, uh, along the west end of the gym. Um, so there will be some more spectator space. So, uh, you know, I think having that employee in that position, and you know, quite honestly, she's a fantastic member of the leadership team in our, uh, our weekly meetings. So, uh, that's, that's been a, a great change. And then, uh, and then with enforcement, uh, code enforcement, um, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, I have heard from business owners and building owners downtown that they appreciate, uh, a little more consistent parking enforcement. Uh, while some may wish that it was more consistent, um, it, it certainly, I mean, most people would agree is, is more consistent than it has been in the past. Um, and, and as you know, we, uh, made some code updates and, and may have seen some new signs on sign poles downtown, just clarifying two-hour rule. And, uh, and so we, um, I think continue to make improvements in the code enforcement realm, uh, as well. And, uh, and we've got, uh, a few more improvements in sort of FY twenty five, um, outside of the parking aspect of code enforcement, just the other aspects. So, um, yeah, I, I think, um, you know, perhaps I am biased. But I, I think that the, the recommended changes that we implemented last year are, are really starting to show themselves in our operations every day.
I would like to comment on that. Um, I think that's really interesting. I feel like for years, we've been talking about the files, the city files. And this idea that there was nothing to be done about the city files, that we just had to figure out how to store them. So I think that's really interesting, um, because the commission had been asking for a clerk, and that is an unintended net positive for us. Because I know that the public has asked for records, and I know that it takes a lot of time to go from what we hear. It takes a lot of time to go through. So that's really exciting. And to find anybody that wants to digitize files, like, hang on to them. I mean, that's like fantastic for the community and for the go- local government. I appreciate hearing about, you know, we're always talking, like in government, government and public service, how to increase capacity without actually, we don't have, like, more money, or we can't just, like, grow government. But how do we increase, increase capacity knowing that we have all these constraints? So that's really interesting to hear that that reorganization didn't add people, but it added capacity just by changing the table, like who was at the leadership table, by, by moving people around so that they had access to different resources within government. Now our rec department is able to offer more to the community. That's pretty cool. Like, I know that I'm not, I'm not articulating how awesome that is, that we didn't actually have to add people to increase service in one department, but that's pretty fantastic. Um, and I appreciate hearing about code enforcement too, because that's another one that we've been hearing about for years and years and years. Yeah. So thanks for that update. That's a huge change in one year, from my perspective. Um, the other thing I wanted to respond to is something that Commissioner Alliance has brought up, and I know he's not here. But I know it's important to him, um, Wind Rider. And he's often mentioned or repeatedly mentioned about his, um, interest in improving and increasing public transit in Livingston. I would be interested, um, to know if we have studies about this. I am interested if, if we invest more in public transportation. I just want to make sure that it's based on community need and offering the service where it's needed most in the com- community and to the community members that are actually going to use it. Do you know if that data exists yet? I know it's still.
I can answer that a little bit if you want.
I'm happy to hear it from.
Well, just, I mean, my past experience being on the board. Kristen Galbraith keeps awesome records of, um, you know, daily riders and stuff like that. I mean, it's a very concise and very easy to read. Um, I don't know where we're at, but they're constantly updating, you know, the, the routes and stuff like that based on feedback from riders and stuff like that. So, um, I think it would be real easy to get a hold of that, maybe, and at least have a comprehensive, I mean, an overview of it, but.
And I'm thinking like of a needs assessment. Like, so we have, we have information on who uses it, but also do we have, or is there like a simple? I guess that's what I would be interested in if the city, from my perspective as one commissioner, saying a larger monetary commitment, it would be nice to know if there was like a needs assessment attached to requests. Or like, what would the administrative request be? Right? Like, if, if that was something that the commission was interested in, I'd be interested here, from hearing from Mister Gager and like the people to think about transportation, how that would be evaluated before we would put more money to it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it, uh, absolutely makes sense. And, um, yeah, so I, I have had, uh, a, a few conversations with, uh, with our counterparts at Park County that operate the service. And it's my understanding, I believe, the, the number that's six in my head recently is they were up to about thirty or so, um, average daily riders, um, in, in the, the current operations. And so, um, you know, I think certainly there is some, some room for, room for improvement. Uh, the, I, I started my government career actually in public transportation and have worked there pretty consistently since, uh, two thousand and six. And, um, you know, the, 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 the key to transit ridership is service. And really, the more service you have, the more ridership you have. And, um, you know, with, uh, with bus transits, a, a good rule of thumb on heavy-duty buses is that they cost about a hundred dollars an hour to operate between the equipment and the labor. Um, the cutaway buses that, that Wind Rider operates are usually significantly cheaper, somewhere in that fifty to seventy dollar an hour range to operate. And so, um, you know, it, I, I, I certainly, uh, welcome the opportunity in the coming years to get more, uh, acquainted with the Wind Rider system. I think we have tremendous potential in the city for public transit. Um, but I, I, I do think, um, with those federal programs, fifty-three oh nine and fifty-three eleven, that, um, build off of local funding, um, you know, there, there really is the power, um, to, to amplify our level of service with, you know, somewhat modest, uh, investments from the, the local community. But, but that said, you know, at, at fifty dollars, uh, or so an hour, you know, not just kind of ballparking what I assume our, our operating uh, cost is, um, you know, our, our five thousand dollar contribution really only, uh, is about a hundred hours of service. Which is about two hours, uh, a, a week per year. Um, and, and so, uh, really to, to grow beyond that, we would, um, probably want to be investing, um, you know, a significant more amount than just the five thousand or ten thousand, um, really, if we want to meaningfully impact the service. And so, um, you know, there we would start to get into, um, origin and destination surveys in the community to find out where people work, where people live, uh, where they would ride transit to and at what hours. And then we could start to, um, you know, build a service plan off of that. So, um, it's, it's something I've done in, in other places, not only as a staff member, but as a, a board member of transit agencies. Um, so I, I do look forward to, to getting into that analysis. Uh, unfortunately, it's just something I haven't had the time to, to dive into.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's more what I'm thinking. I think, um, the feedback that I've gotten has been interesting over the years with Wind Rider. And so I think it would be good if, because I think it would be expensive to just have more information. And I don't know, like, what the critical population size is for for governments of our size to be giving contribution. So, but I don't, I don't know that right now is the time to do all those things with everything else on our list.
Well, the good news is, uh, we've got, over the coming years, I think we'll have some opportunities in the general fund um, to explore some of these different program solutions, um, as, as we have some, uh, just some structural changes that occur in the coming years.
Um, the other thing that I know we've talked about is there are some things that weren't reflected on, in the budget, some of the changes that you had suggested that weren't reflected in the internal pages of the budget. Do you know what I'm referring to?
Yes, we, uh, there were a few places where we, you know, kind of said, no recommended changes for, uh, uh, in the streets section. We're actually taking three part-timers and, and consolidating that into a full-time. And there's one or two other references there that we missed. So, uh, we will tighten that up, um, and provide those updated meetings for those.
Um, I think from my perspective, there's probably going to be more questions to come, just because that's how it's gone every year that I've been on the commission, is the public will come forward as they realize what's in here. So I expect we're not done yet with questions, but that's what I have for questions right now.
Other question?
I have none.
I will just ask a question to you, or I guess maybe it's more of a comment, um, sort of reflecting off of what you were talking about with Wind Rider. And I know that we had had the conversation around the, um, location of the Wellness Center and that there is a Wind Rider stop there. So just thinking that potentially that's going to trigger more ridership in the coming years and to be prepared to start looking for that as well.
Yeah, I, we, um, do make five, or Wind Rider makes five daily stops at Katy Benel Park as it is. And, um, yes, I, uh, which is why I say in, in the coming years, I think it will be very, uh, it'll be fun actually to do that exercise and look at the transit system and see what we can do. Um, and, and I will say, you know, as, as both a staff member and board member of different agencies, um, yes, community recreation centers are, are ones that you build a schedule around because it's a big destination.
Thank you. Commissioners, would you like to do a motion and then we would open it up for a public comment?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five one three zero.
With a motion by Schwartz, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Willach. Okay, let's go ahead and open up, um, the, the, this, uh, agenda item to public comment. If you have, uh, comments, um, around the budget, feel free to come on up. Uh, we'll start with folks in the room. Leslie and then Nancy.
Can it exhibit, uh, number five one three? The, um, here's a couple of things that I noticed that I didn't see through the budget also when I was looking. Um, the city, I mean, I've been coming up here for ten years and the city had money for the, um, the railroad crossing. If I get, it's zero on this particular page and I couldn't find it in the, um, in the budget anywhere where reflects the money that, uh, the city had and received from a grant. And then some was paid back. And there were some that was rolled into, um, the studies, um, but I see nowhere where there is any funding. Um, I was just kind of curious what happened to it. We had received quite a bit, um, over the years, uh, with previous uh, funds, uh, previous managers, excuse me. Um, and the other thing is the impact fees up here show fire, transportation, police and parks, and then unassigned. Um, I know that there's impact fee income from the, uh, Green Acres area and all the other areas for the impact fees that have been run in for the connection fees, and that doesn't show. Thought that that maybe would be something that would be, um, separated that the public would like to see. Uh, because I know that there was also money that was brought in to offset that. Um, just kind of like a line item thing. And, um, I know this will be coming back up in training even, so. Those are my only two comments on it for now.
Thanks, Leslie. Other comments? Nancy?
I just wanted to comment on Wind Rider, since I've taken Wind Rider and I live in a more familiar. First of all, I encourage all of you to take Wind Rider, to see where it goes. These are the kinds of things. And then it, when you talk about Wind Rider, involve the people who take it because they have the best ideas. Now, twice a week, Wind Rider. The best ideas. Now, twice a week, Wind Rider goes to Bozeman, takes people to Bozeman. Uh, for. Appointments. And I found that very helpful, especially in the wintertime when I couldn't get to. My doctor's appointments and I found that really helpful. The setup in Wind Rider, these only room have made me one or two persons. And I, it looks like a van, but it's. Not, you know, it doesn't hold very many people. Another thing is some of the places where the people have to meet the bus are not convenient. Um. One is by the senior center, but there's no bench or anything. And I've seen people stand out in the. Wind in the cold and other to take that. So, I mean, there are lots of things, but mainly. Ask the people who are involved and have them meet, have it so they know. And I mean, they can give you a list of people who take it on a regular basis. Because they're the ones who know how to improve it and and how it services them. I have only taken it. I've worked together with Wind Rider and Angel Line. And those two work together that and some go to the hospitals, some go to the businesses. And so there are different requirements and I'm not sure, but I think it's a very valuable service and. I don't like to quote big cities, but Kalispell has had a excellent kind of transportation. Similar to that. I don't remember what it's called, but I've taken it before. Where some people paid if they could and different things too. So, anyway, I think it's a valuable service, but it. Does need to be improved. And when I see it, it looks like nobody's in there. So. I'm, I don't know if they're driving around empty or what, but anyway, I found it helpful.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else in the room?
Just great, oh, two oh four East Cali District. First of all, I really, really want to caution the city on digitizing historic records. If you would take that into consideration. We had an incident, uh, goodness, twenty years ago. Uh, when Clamie Jane hit the streets of Livingston, Montana, sort of controversial thing. Brought a historian over here named Jaden Gerton from Deadwood. And what had happened is the records for the trials. That occurred at the turn of the century were just placed in some box and they were gonna go ex- throw away. Well, it turns out that Clamie Jane had been accused of being a prostitute in one of the books. So Janine, who's a remarkable historian, found that box that had the trials of Clamie Jane when she was here in Livingston. And it turns out that it wasn't Clamie Jane, it was Ida Tellmore who sent you to Clamie Jane when she was arrested. And so. This obscure box that was about ready to be thrown out. By the city of Livingston actually clarified the history of Clamie Jane for perpetuity. So I, and also the, all the pictures of Doris Luthorn are somewhere over in the basement of the Shane Center. We lost them in two thousand four again. So I, I'm saying some things, business kinds of records are break to digitize. But historical records are not. We could change the instrument by which we look at these records and suddenly. The digitizing goes away and the paper trail is what we have to have. For historic records. I just want the city to keep that in consideration when they take a look at this. Um, and the other thing is, I what, I've never had a chance to publicly say thank you to. To uh, Galbraith because we spent eight years wanting the equivalent. Wind Rider and we met and met and met and I was on the Clean Cities Coalition, which was. Part of the Yellowstone Business Partnership about our Board of Directors for Clean Cities for. Uh, Siradi Yellowstone over here and we were able to get the one bus between here and Bozeman. Because PFL and Chico stepped up to the plate. But we worked to get the equivalent of Wind Rider. She went to bat, wrote a grant, and we have Wind Rider. So I just wanted publicly acknowledge the remarkable work she did. In order to bring our Wind Rider into into being. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room? Comment on the budget? All right, not seeing anyone in the room, we'll go online. Is there anyone online that would like to make comments on this agenda item?
I would.
Go ahead, if you can give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, I am Jennifer Bushnell and I'm with Unwind at two eighteen South Main Street. Um, I, this is my first meeting, so I'm trying to catch up. I was trying to skim through all these budgets as quickly as I could. Um, does this proposed budget have anything to do with um, action items B, C, and D? As far with the uh, rates of the water?
Those will be coming up next, so might be best that you can make a comment on those as each of those comes up. Yep, so we're in.
Does the proposed budget reflect any of that coming into it at this point? If you're gonna vote on it at this point?
So I will, Jennifer, I will take that as a question and we can ask Mr. Gager that at the end of the comments, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, any other questions or comments online? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Um, let's go ahead and see if we can get a few of these and these questions answered and let you guys help me if I miss anything.
We'll do our best.
Thanks. Mr. Gager, uh, could you answer the question about the railroad crossing monies?
Uh, yes, and you know, I um, I recognized earlier in my comments, I didn't even acknowledge our finance director. Paige Betterhoff and the excellent work she did. And Paige, would you care to come up here and? Answer some uh, some overpass and impact questions since uh. Since since you're missing dinner with the family tonight?
Um, so to answer the question about the railroad crossing, we had a special levy that the um. Voters had voted on and I can't remember the year that it started, but I believe it was two mills. That money was used to actually do an engineering study for this project. There was a little bit left over at the end of that project, which we used to purchase the Star Road facility for an eventual or future location. For the railroad crossing. Um, at that time, we'd fully expended the funds in that particular um. Fund and ended up having to transfer about forty thousand dollars from the general fund to cover that deficit. So that no longer exists because the the levy has. Has now sunsetted and there's no money left in the fund. So, there is additional money um, that had been allocated to that project by the state. The city had never received that money. It had to be expended by a certain time and we were not going to meet that deadline on the railroad crossing. Uh, so that money has been reallocated to another project and I believe it's. It's either Front Street or Montana Street that the city intends to use that on, but that that revenue will come from the state. Um, as far as the impact fees go, the. Impact fees for water and sewer are actually housed in the water and sewer funds themselves. So it's not that they don't exist. They just are in a different fund than the the impact fee. And then to answer um, the last question about um, whether or not the rates are reflected in the current budget. The answer is yes, we do reflect those rate increases in the the current budget. Is that all of them?
I I think there was one bit, so. It's just on my mind because I took the budgeting class, but I'm. So I'm gonna try to frame it in a way that you can help. Um, I think the question was about, for instance, Green Acres. Has has to pay impact fees. Um, but we don't see specific line items that show Green Acres revenue. Just like we don't see specific line items for who purchases. I'm I'm thinking of an example, like we also see it for like a cemetery plot. So.
So when we did um, the regional sewer project, we created a fund specifically to account for that project. And so all the revenue that Green Acres residents contributed went directly into that fund. Um, and that is in the capital improvement fund section of your budget. And then.
I saw yours. Yes, I feel like I saw a line item for that.
Yeah, no, the the Green Acres stuff is actually housed in its own fund. Um, and so the revenue that we collected for that project all came in and actually fiscal year twenty, the the current fiscal year twenty twenty four. Which is why you're not seeing any revenue for that in FY twenty five. Um, but the two funds that reflected that particular project were um, forty two oh five. Which will close out by the end of this.
What tab are you on? Like, it's.
I'm in tab one.
So it's tab one dash.
But if you wanted to look at that.
The bottom of the.
One dash ten.
So it'll be your four dash. They're numbered really well this year, so thank you.
And then if you want to see the actual detail of the capital project fund, you're gonna go to tab twenty five. So if you go to twenty five dash seven, that is the breeding first project. And it breaks out the revenue by the um, the S I D bond proceeds. The revenue that was received in advance by the Green Acres resident. And then the American Rescue Fund that we received.
Thank you. I think that gets to. So when you go to the actual budget book, there's like twenty some different tabs and that's not in here, but it should be linked. In the agenda and the bottom of each page, like the first part of the number is the tab section and then it's the second part is the page number. So this is twenty five dash seven.
So it's under Regional Sewer.
Yeah, correct. So what we're seeing is like, this is like the flip snow version and then. This is the thing that you can get online. Um, I think there's copies too. Where can people see copies so they don't have to print off their own?
Uh, we have uh, one in City Hall.
So you can just come by City Hall if you want to see it.
I will confirm if we have the city clerk take one over the library. By off Southland, I don't know.
I think I have one on my computer. I didn't see that one. Um, I I didn't understand it was under Regional Sewer. Yeah, I was looking in for an injury at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Yeah, thanks, Paige. Yeah, thank you. You're super helpful. I did, did we get all the questions answered? Yeah, yes.
If I could, there was a, there was a uh, question slash comment about records and historical records and and I ju-. Just wanted to be clear that um, even as the city works through our digitization process. Uh, there are requirements in state law that we cannot dispose of any records without first offering them to the Montana State Library. And our records that are of a historic nature and not of an operational transaction, transactional nature. Are dealt with differently from those of the historic nature, which, you know, again, are preserved by the state library. Um, we are not trying to lose any of Livingston's history uh, as we go through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioners, further discussion or deliberation? I don't think, I was just looking at all the questions. I don't think there's any more questions. I have things I would say deliberation wise. I think we're at that point, so. I just want to reflect back. When. I remember the first budget cycle with Mr. Gager. We're talking about looking forward at what, at least I was thinking, looking forward what what's to come, knowing one of the things that stood out. Was um, his experience with public budgeting and public finance. In addition to his other administrative work. Um, in terms of his experience and then reflecting back on my time at the commission. The last several years. There are several things that the commission has been asking for, even, I think, two or three commission cycles. Like election cycles prior, those commissioners, um, back to Chair Hoagland. Who had been asking for things for years and they're showing up in this budget. So I just want to highlight a few of those things. Um, I think this budget is outstanding. It's the best budget I've seen as a commissioner. Reading them cover to cover every year and thinking about how the community requests. Do or do not make it into the final budget. So I'm gonna highlight a few of those things now. Um. The first one is the planning department. Since we'd first been talking about our growth policy, we've been talking about the need to implement it. And there's significant um, commitment to that with the planning department. Investing in zoning update and subdivision updates. We've been asking for that for a very long time. Roads is a huge issue for the people who live in Livingston and the people who live on gravel roads in town. Somebody commented tonight from the public on roads. I'm really happy to see that that's showing up in capital investments, but it's also showing up. In investing in humans that work for the city. So moving. Increasing additional street staff person is gonna increase capacity to to improve our roads for the people who live in this town. The flashing beacons. I don't know if you all remember a few years ago when there were flags on Park Street. And people had to flag to get attention and little kids did so that they could feel safe crossing the street. So putting in flashing beacons and increasing the number of crossings. For people to cross safely, not just little kids, all people, is fantastic. Um, urban forest, that's something that people have been talking about for a long time, particularly on the north side, on the tree board for years, talking about the north side. I'll look forward to an update on that when there's data to share. I think that's important to like, people can see how their money is being spent and the impact it's having. Um, I'll add. Again, in investing in people in the planning department. Whether it's um, interns or external support. The Mobile Crisis Response Team is the next one for. As long as suicide and mental health crises have been an issue in the county, we've been talking about this and it's nice to see an investment from the city. The resiliency around the river could not be more timely. Seeing a commitment to rail crossing improvements in the manager's message and that there's a plan moving forward. You know, and not just investing money without a plan, but coming up with a plan and a commitment before we put more money towards it, I think is critical. Um, seeing a plan. To update the existing growth policy. It's hard to believe that we're coming up. I I think, what year did we pass this growth policy? Was it two thousand nineteen? Twenty one, okay, I was thinking the strategic plan, I'm sorry. Okay, so twenty one. So it's important to be planning for that because the five year date is coming up. So we should be planning for it before the five year date comes up. So that's great to see. I I just think that all those things that are in this, and then the things that are in the budget itself. Um, the commission has been asking for a long time for investment in the people that work for the city. Last year, you focused. More on pay equity. I know that there's still some of that that's being adjusted and just because of the way union contracts work and the way. There's many different departments on different sort of cycles and ladders. But then also um, focus on benefits. That's another important area to keep. You know, to take care of city staff and that's something that we were asking for. So I'm really pleased to see that those things are coming out in this budget. Um. I don't want to belabor all the details, but I think it's worth mentioning. All those things have been talked about. As long as I've been on the commission.
Absolutely.
And this is the first time we've seen. You can correct me and I would hope that you will if I'm wrong about anything, but.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've seen some of these things and I feel like even the parks improvements, I mean, Chair Holman was asking for that for a long time. So, great budget. Thank you. I support it. Um. I hope that the people that live in our community can at the very least like read the manager's message if they don't want to wade through spreadsheets. That makes sense to me. Um, to get an overview. So thank you for your work on it this year. Look forward to what's to come.
I would agree. Um. You know, we even, we even have wave, wave finding um, mentioned here that you you hit on all the high, high points. I'm not going to go over them again, but you know, the way finding we're hearing, we've heard in several meetings, the last meetings about signage um, in our parks and other places. So I know that's coming and I'm excited to see that and see it included in the budget. Um, as well, and that we uh, continued our commitments to some of the other organizations that we've been working with around the warming center and uh, the housing coalition. Um, so thank you for that. I think the budgets have gotten better over the last several years, um, particularly last year and then into this year. So thank you, Mr. Gager, to you and Mrs. Verhoff for the work that they've done, that you've done. Um. I, you know, I would be able to sit down and read this whole budget, you know, and get through it and understand it and figure it out. And I think that that makes it really straightforward for us and I really appreciate that. Um, that's all I have to say.
I have one clarifying question.
Sure.
I am aware that we have all disclosed conflicts that we might have with specific items in the budget.
Yep.
Like where we work, for example, like where I work, there's a position that's at the same university. And so how can you advise us on um, how this vote does or does not conflict with specific items like that?
Uh, absolutely fantastic question, uh, Vice Chair Nudes. And so, you know, I, it's important to remember that what we are voting on here today is uh, is the budget. And it actually specifically is this resolution, which sets our uh, revenues and expenditures. Actual contracts that are funded uh, within the context of the budget will come before you folks separately. And that would be the time or the appropriate to um, disclose and or recuse as may be necessary. Um, but uh, right now, all of all we are doing is uh, approving top line appropriation.
Cool. I know. Other commissioners, discussion deliberation? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll call please.
Chair Cale.
For.
Vice Chair Nukes.
For.
Which one's for?
For.
Mr. Willers.
For.
Motion carries. Okay. Give me a moment. So it's advanced and a couple of books here. Yeah, let's maybe take it out. If you want to, um.
Good call.
Folks, we're just ten minutes before our usual uh, break time. So before we um, jump into the next uh, action item, would, could I have a motion for a break, a ten minute break?
I move to take a ten minute break.
Okay, second.
Second.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second. I knew it's all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Um, so we are going to take a ten minute break. So we will be back at six fifty eight.
Right.
All right, thanks, everybody. Uh, we're going to go ahead and call this uh, city commission meeting back to order. Um, at seven o'clock and we will go ahead and move on to action item B. Uh, resolution five one three one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to adjust all rates for all customers of the city of, sorry, of the City of Livingston Water System, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Cale. The item before you is, as we indicated, uh, resolution to contemplate uh, an increase in water rates. And as shown in the uh, staff report, we have four levels of our uh, four tiers of our water rates and uh, approximately seventy one percent of users um, and and nearly all of our residential users fall into the lowest tier, which is uh, up to ten thousand gallons of uh, of water consumed in a month. And uh, and that's approximately uh, eighty seven percent of our, of our billings uh, fall into that tier. And the the recommended increase at that lowest level is five point six percent, which matches the uh, rate of inflation that was observed over the uh, prior twelve months. And um, because uh, many of our uh, inputs in the uh, water department are are um, tied to uh, that core of inflation, uh, whether it is uh, electricity to help pump the water or uh, chemicals to help treat the water um, before we uh, before we distribute it. Uh, we are subject to uh, inflation just as, uh, just as the general consumer is. And so uh, again, the recommendation is for that base tier, which uh, impacts uh, the vast majority of our users, seventy one percent, including almost all residential users. The recommendation is to increase by five point six percent. And as we move up, uh, we're recommending an additional uh, increase up to thirteen percent at the, at the highest tier. And uh, the uh, the average increase um, for our, our water users uh, is um, uh, approximately eighty five cents on the low end for our residential users up to two dollars and eighty five cents, depending on the uh, amount of water that's consumed by the, the customer. So I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
All right, I have a question that was just touched on briefly, I think in the previous segment about our uh, larger, I'll say like the uh, mobile homes uh, uses, how they're sort of bundled. So they end up being in the higher tier, which is then going to receive, I believe, a higher rate increase. Is there a method to address that in those customers?
Yes, we are um, looking at our, our administrative provisions uh, with the goal of being able to evaluate those accounts on a uh, on a per user basis, um, just as we do for simple examples.
Okay.
Are you?
Okay, any other questions? I'm going to just shut this door.
Sure, I'll ask a clarifying question.
Thank you, Mr. Nusar. Let's hear some yelling over there.
Yeah, I also heard the yelling. I hope everything's okay. It was joyful yelling. Um, so, one thing that occurs to me as we're talking about these is that we're probably going to get the question, as we often do, like, why are we raising rates? Why would we raise rates? Um, could you shed light on whether or not the city is making a profit from community members? Like if that's the goal of raising rates? And then, could you also share what the impacts are, say, for, this is a hypothetical, if we were in a municipality that didn't raise rates to match inflation? What the long term or even short term impacts of departments or city services would be? Does that make sense? That, I know that's kind of a long question, but.
Yeah, yeah. It 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 makes perfect sense. Um, and and I I will take those. Um, you know, I guess in the order received, uh, no, I can, I can assure you, uh, Vice Chair Nudes, the city is not making a, a profit on our water uh, system. And uh, uh, I would point uh, everyone to page fifty eight in the packet. This is the uh, resolution that was just passed um, towards the, the bottom there. Um, folks will see that budgeted uh, revenues in the water fund that we are talking about are approximately two point uh, two million one hundred ninety five thousand one hundred and sixty eight. Um, although budgeted expenditures are higher at two million five hundred eighty three thousand four oh seven. And so uh, in fiscal year twenty five, we are proposing to actually run a deficit of approximately uh, almost four hundred thousand in the water fund. Um, much of that is due to capital um, projects and capital expenditures in the fund. And so um, uh, on an operating basis, uh, while we may be, um, while we uh, you know, revenues may be above expenditures, when we factor in the capital and long term investments, uh, expenditures exceed revenues in the coming year. And 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 that really is, is fairly routine. Uh, water sewer are are very capital intensive uh, businesses. Uh, whether it is um, the, the wells uh, to to pump the water or the pipes to distribute them or uh, conversely on sewer side, the pipes to collect and the uh, water reclamation facility to treat. Um, there, there is a lot of money to be spent, really just keeping the system in a state of good repair, uh, without even worrying about expansion. And so the uh, is a, that's a, a nice segue really, I guess, to your second question, which is uh, what happens if, if we don't invest in that state of good repair and and make those capital expenditures year to year. Um, you know, really the, the system begins to go into a state of decay and and breakdown. And and rather than doing um, small repairs here and there uh, over time to the system, um, we, we really would get into a, a point where um, large portions of the system may become inoperable and and would require really full replacements, um, which, you know, I, I, I think I would kind of equate that to um, to anyone's house. Um, it, it certainly is easier to fix uh, one small leak uh, rather than the entire plumbing system in, in someone's house, right? Um, it, it's just a smaller system to access and and uh, less materials. And so, you know, a state of good repair uh, really is um, what we, what we strive for uh, in, in both the water and sewer systems.
Thanks. I think that's just helpful contest, context to remember that like, if we're doing it right, we're as close to breaking even as we can all the time, right? Unless we have like a huge thing that we're investing in and we're trying to save up to pay for something big. Thanks.
Others, questions?
No, um, the only thing that was also mentioned is custom materials. I mean, first pipe and fittings and stuff like that have really have gone up a lot in, in price. So that doesn't reflect that, but. Now, far as clarifying goes, no. I'm good.
Mm hmm. Okay, I have one question and then I have comments, but I'll wait until I get to comment. Um. You know, I think that we hear from community members every year, well, you raised water rates last year and you're raising them again this year. Would you expect that we are probably going to see rate increases just about every year? Like that is a, that's an annual process that is probably going to happen? I mean, just to be honest with the community, like, what's that look like?
Yeah, um, to, to be honest and and really set expectations, uh, I, I would expect to see water and sewer rates um, increase generally by about the amount of inflation every year. Uh, because as, as I said, and as Commissioner uh, Schwartz pointed out, um, you know, the, the cost of our inputs, our materials is, is increasing just as uh, as they do for the general public and and any other business out there. And so um, in a construction boom, yes, uh, you know, pipe and and fittings um, are, are more expensive for, you know, construction projects and we are no different than that. And uh, just as, as people pay more on their electric bill or their fuel bill, um, at home, we are a, a consumer of, of those uh, goods in our, our service delivery as well. So, um, yes, in, in, in order to um, keep pace with inflation, I would expect that our rates um, do increase by approximately the rate of inflation every year.
Thank you. Other questions? Um, I would entertain a motion and then we could go to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, resolution five one three one.
I have a motion by Schwartz. Wait a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Willers. Great. Okay, so let's go ahead and open resolution five one three one to call for public hearing to increase the water rates for FY twenty four, twenty five, or open that to the public. I will start in the room.
Sounds like. Uh, good evening, commission. Again, Leslie Fidel, Limster, Chamber of Commerce. So every year I'm up here in front of you and I appreciate the commission for asking those questions ahead of me coming up here. Um, but still. I'm up here representing uh, many of the businesses who could not be here right now. Our restaurants. I do see somebody that is still on the call and she'll be talking to you shortly. I'm looking at this report, your budget. You have a water surplus. It what? Two point.
Can you tell us about Pedro and Leslie so we can be looking together?
Beginning fund balance for June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Uh, two point seven million dollars in surplus funds sitting there. So sure that you have two point one nine budget revenues and you just said you're going to spend two point five million dollars, but you're still going to end up with two point three million dollars sitting there when even after the flood, even after COVID. Our businesses are struggling and that means all the cost is being passed on to your staff. It's being passed on to, um, you know, folks coming in the door to buy meals and to buy trinkets in the stores. And every time we do this, it is just one more increase passed on. And at what point, and I asked like literally the year of the flood, at what point are we going to stop and give our businesses a break? Inflation is, I understand that, but when you're sitting here with fund with a balance in the account, at what point, and you just said you want to do this each and every year, are we going to listen to our businesses? They create a healthy and happy community in this town. And remember that without the people, that the foundation of the people that live here and the businesses that thrive in this community, what, where do we stop? We are going to outprice and outcost the living here for the people that are here and been here for generations to the point where they're going to go, I know families right now that go to Big Timber to go shopping because of the cost of things here. They go to other communities to eat. I know people that don't live here but have a business here and they're struggling. I run the visitor center and I have two public bathrooms. And right now, and we had a water system that I had to shut off. So we handwater all of our lovely flowers to make the visitor center look nice for all the tourists that come here. Because I can't afford to run the water system. And the public bathrooms, I, I mean, I mean, we're already packed with visitors every day. And um, those bathrooms are going from open to closed. And the cost of my water rates and the sewer and the garbage rates are going up each and every year. And this, you know, is beyond just the people that live here where you think that eighty five cents this year. You know, three dollars last year, two dollars and forty cents, as you said a couple of years ago, it's only two dollars and forty cents. Well, you know what? That's a lot for some people because here it is five years later and we're still talking about the same thing and we're not cutting any breaks for anybody sitting on this huge fund of money that we could actually be giving people a break, like one year. We know that this is a political year and we know that this year inflation is through the roof and people are struggling all over this nation and in this city and in this county. And I mean, at what point do we just give a break? Like one year? I mean, you would ask the question, Mrs. News.
Ms., but.
Ms.
My mom is Mrs. News.
What year do we give a break? And what does it cost us to give a break? Thank you.
Is that, Leslie, can I ask you, is that the page that you're referencing, just so that we're all looking at the same thing, is that in tonight's agenda or is that in the budget?
Yes, that was the, the one that he was just talking about earlier. It's um, actually the one he just, he answered your questions. He gave numbers to, number fifty one thirty, exhibit eight. It's right on the bottom.
Oh, there. Fifty eight, fifty eight. Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Yep.
Uh, anyone else in the room? Thank you for that.
Dish Graybo two oh four East Calendar Street. In my time here, our community has made a transition from the railroad. There was a time when I first got here that we actually had employees working for the railroad as well, but we're pretty much a tourist town. And what's happening with a tourist town is, of course, we're paying for a lot of tourists and we don't have a resort tax. And we don't tax those tourists. I want every opportunity, frankly, to tax those tourists. Because, and I, this commit, this commission is great, but they, there is not one city commission in Livingston who's ever said that economic health for Livingston was a part of our strategic one. I brought it up and brought it up and brought it up. And they have never, ever said, oh, well, maybe something we're interested in. And they have never, ever said, oh, well, maybe something we're interested in. In this community is the economic health of Livingston, Montana. And I will say this. As a downtown building owner, and I'm committed to two things, cause I'm really committed to this growth policy. Cause it keeps us from turning into Belgrade, frankly. It keeps us a town. But a viable, economically healthy central business district is absolutely essential to smart growth. If you don't have a central business district that is working economically. Smart growth doesn't make any sense. Our growth policy doesn't make any sense at all. And we've never taken the time or the effort to really look at our central business district. I, I, for example, really uh, recommended to friends of.
Point of order, what's this have to do with the water rates?
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I recommend Joe Anacotti because. When we consider water rates. Then we, we have to consider its effect on our economic health. And we also, when we start increasing our water rates, to the point of which. That we are increasing and that's maybe a point you missed. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, was that we are paying for tourists with our water rates going up. So there is, we haven't achieved the kind of balance. That we ever, we should be achieving and we should take a look at this realistically. It's what I'm asking us to do. I'm not in favor of just blindly increasing water rates without looking at the economic health. Of the businesses, of the well-being of, of our community, cause we're gonna go more and more to tourist economy. And we're gonna more, pay more and more of what the tourists should be paying for. So I truly think this has to be taken into consideration as we move ahead. And, and I, I almost had the resort tax passed, Bob Emmerger and I did about ten years ago, I wish we'd done it then. But those are, those are factors that go into all of this as well.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room? All right, we'll go online. Anyone online would like to make public comment? Uh, you can raise your hand or come off mute. Give us your name.
Jennifer Bushnell with Unwind.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. So we have um, also the Jackpot Casino in town have been doing business there for a couple of years. Um, several years, I should say. We also uh, have found it extremely hard to. To find and retain staffing um, in the slower seasons. And it is a direct. I guess reflection of the tourist season and things of that nature where we are at the point now. Where we are combining our two businesses and the, the efforts that it takes for a small business. We're a small business owner, an operator, um, family owned and operated. It is extremely hard and financially taxing to retain staff throughout the slower months. But we are doing everything that we can to. To complete our business and, and keep it growing and. Any, any little bit of a, you know, if it's a, a five percent or, I'm sorry, looking at my notes here. And a two dollar in uh, raise from an eighty five cent bill. Is a huge difference to those that are, are um, we're compensating our employees. So that they will stay versus the business making money at this point. And um, in our few small years just on Main Street of being in business. They, I have seen several businesses close. Uh, they're only open seasonally. And even Pickle Barrel is closed half of the time because they, they don't find staff. Because they can't afford to pay their staff. And um. I just, I don't agree with raising. These uh, rates with, without some sort of compensation again. If you're gonna tax people, the tourists that are coming through, it's, it's a very real issue for local business owners.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else online like to make comment? Arlene, go ahead, give your name.
I had a, I'd sent an email, so I didn't know if you were going to read it, so I'll just, if you don't, I'll go ahead and read what I had, okay?
Okay, can you get, Arlene, I will need your full name and address for the record though, okay?
Sure. Arlene Romer de Feltry at one oh six Elm Lane. And it's just a statistic I found. I was trying to see kind of on a national scale how. You know, what's the trend in terms of um, sewer and water rates and increases and things like that? So I did send this to all the commissioners and the city manager. I'll just read it. It's very short. It's uh, the website is Bluefield Research. And this is what they wrote. Across fifty of the largest US metropolitan areas, monthly household water bills averaged. Forty nine dollars, fifty three cents and monthly sewer bills average seventy one dollars, sixteen cents based on average household. Consumption over the past twelve years, combined household water and sewer bills increased by an average of four point one each year. That's combined. From twenty to, twenty twenty two to twenty three. Combined household water and sewer bills increased by three point nine percent, down slightly. From the four point three increase observed from twenty twenty one to twenty two. So just giving you that, I'm not the nu- numbers expert like um, Paige and the ma- city manager. But my question basically is, why are Livingston rate hikes so far above the national average? And uh, with compassion to people who are trying to live here and the businesses especially. Are there any other options for how to fund the projected shortfall? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Arlene. And I did not see your email, but it, that could be dependent on the time you sent it, so. Okay, thank you. So. Some of us don't get those emails when they come in at the last minute, but thank you for coming and making your, giving your comment. Uh, anyone else online? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. So we try to get some of these questions answered and then we'll do that. Um, maybe we start from the bottom. Up, uh, we had Arlene who was asking about uh, the rate hikes and national average.
Um, I, yeah, I, you know, in, in response to that, I, I guess I would have a few comments. One. Each system and the, the rates from each system really are, are unique to, to those systems. Um, we in, in Livingston, uh, you know, pump a lot of water. Um, because our wells, you know, by virtue of our proximity to the river, our wells are all, uh, generally speaking, very close to the river. Um, however, we've got a lot of residences that are uphill of those wells. And so, uh, we routinely pump water to the top of the, the big hill up by uh, Reservoir Drive. And, and then let that water flow downhill from there. Uh, similarly, we pump water uh, west out to. Um, the PFL area and, and east out to the hospital. And so, um, each system has, has costs that are unique to that system. That said, uh, I would, I would point out that um, the amounts that were quoted. Um, totaled approximately a hundred and twenty dollars a month uh, for the average water and sewer. Um, I just looked at my bill uh, because it's the end of the month and I had to pay uh, my bill. Uh, for water, sewer and solid waste, I paid a hundred and four dollars. Um, and so while our increases may be above the national average. Our total costs appear to be below those national averages. And, and again, um. The vagaries of every system really kind of dictate some of, of those changes and, and perhaps, um, you know, some conjecture here on my part. Um, we have a little bit of catching up to do from, from some years of not increasing our rates uh, at the, at the pace of inflation. And so, um, that would be my uh, my, my thoughts on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then Leslie had had the question about the surplus funds in the water budget.
Yeah, the, the fund balance and, and um, you know, I, I heard a few, um, I, I heard a few questions in there. Um, you know, I, I heard comments about, you know, if this is a political year, why don't we just take a break from raising rates? Well, um, you know, the way election schedules work, uh, even years are generally at the state, federal level. Odd years are at the local level. So if, if we were to pick and choose when we were going to raise uh, water or sewer rates. Relative to uh, the timing of elections, we may very well never raise those rates because there's an election every year. And uh, this year we'll have the opportunity to vote uh, four times here in, in the city of Livingston. Um, and, you know, when it comes to, to maintaining that fund balance, uh, you know, I, I think the chamber. Um, president really actually illustrated it, it quite well. Uh, when she spoke about her uh, private water system that had some problems and had to be shut off and, and resulted in hand watering. Uh, within the building. Um, that really is uh. In my observation, probably indicative of, of an entity who hasn't invested in maintaining a state of good repair in their water system. Uh, we as the public operators of a water system do not have the luxury of shutting down a system that we have not invested in. If we shut down the water system, we can all just move somewhere else and, and call it a day. Because we can't live in the city of Livingston if we take that approach. And so. We maintain a fund balance in our enterprise funds so that we may maintain a state of good repair. And do that capital investment that's required to keep the system operating. In addition to that, uh, while we have. Um, very uh, little to no debt on our, our water and sewer systems. Uh, if we were ever to engage in, in debt to uh, facilitate the expansion or improvement of our system. There are debt coverage ratios that are typically required by bondholders and those debt coverage ratios. Uh, typically range from one to one and a half times operating expenses. And so, uh, in order to put us into that position where we can maintain a good, a state of good repair. And then eventually, potentially uh, borrow money to uh, invest in the system for the necessary repairs and expansions. We actually need this fund balance. And so, uh, I, I would point, you know, our, our users and our viewers at home. To the Government Finance Officers Association and they do publish um, guidelines for fund balances. Not only for general fund, which we've spoken about here, but also for enterprise funds. And, and I, I, I think folks at home will, will find that the fund balance maintained in, in all of our enterprise funds really is quite reasonable. Uh, when we consider the uh, the operating expenditures and then also the, the capital needs for state of good repair.
Those are the questions that I had written down. Had I missed any? Okay, um, so we're at the point of discussion deliberation, Commissioners?
Um, I'll go, yes. I just made a few notes, but um, nobody likes paying. More for, for anything. Um, I certainly don't. But also understand that. What, what the city is up against, um. We're playing catch up and we will be for many, many years. I, I don't wanna say, use the word. In the past, it's been neglected, the, the water and sewer systems, um. And hadn't been planned for replacement, which eventually. The bill's coming due now and it hasn't for quite some time. And I, I've been on the commission eight years, um. We never um, had a strategic plan before that I've noticed um, in the past. And uh, with one implemented, um, these things came to four, you know, what are we gonna, you know, do in the future? We're, you know, five years from now, we'll end up with, um, I'm, I'm gonna go back to Seventh Street, I Lewis and. And Calendar and uh, and Clark, and just every. Five feet, if not more, was, had to be patched over um, a number of four or five years and that is expensive. And that's um, and that's what we wanna avoid doing. We need to, you know, make the capital improvements. And keep going down these streets of replacing these eighty, ninety year old pipes. And um. Uh, folks, I, I mean, I know ten dolla- it's ten dollars and twenty cents a year that we're looking at. And I think that's a pretty small investment for a good water system and to keep doing it. And I, I do anticipate seeing rate increases every year. To be, you know, catch up on our backlog and uh, and with the, you know, inflation and stuff like that, so. And we don't blindly raise rates. Um, a lot of thought goes into this and uh. And you know, believe me, I don't, I don't wanna have to pay anymore than any, you know, anybody else, but I understand why we have to.
Thank you. Other Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll go.
Commissioner Willitt?
Uh, I am loathe to add. Increased rates. I don't like that. I don't like paying them, um, especially when it's the same stuff. If I get some new stuff and I have increased rate, then I'm kinda happy with it, cause I got a new thing. But if it's just the same water coming out of the same tap. Kind of a bummer. But uh, that being said, a few weeks ago, a couple of meetings back, we had a uh. Extraordinary presentation by the Water Department where we had a graphic showing a uh. Host of different ages of our infrastructure and uh, I think Commissioner Schwartz. Dialed it right in by saying that the, the chickens have come to roost on this. That stuff's eighty, ninety, hundred years old. And if we're going to increase capacity by densifying our city and allowing increased. Uh, residences per lot, as it, as it is with our ADUs and our, and our other uh. Accessory dwelling uh, uh, resolutions that we've gone through, we have to increase capacity. And we have to make sure we do that and, you know, fix the old stuff as well. So I don't like it, uh, but I see where they're coming from. So, um, I yield. It's not a happy one for me, but uh, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Willitt. Mr. Newt?
Sure, um. I appreciate the question about the ending balance. That Leslie had and I appreciate the information from Mr. Gager about why that's good. Um, responsible use of taxpayer funds to like. Make sure that we can do what we need to do for the people who live here in terms of potential problems coming up our new infrastructure. Like unexpected infrastructure problems. Um, I do think that this is a decision, a decision that benefits. And supports economic investment in Livingston. It's a smarter decision. To maintain what we have than have to completely replace it because we cut costs now. And we don't take care of the infrastructure we have, which is very, very expensive. That would be not a good economic investment in Livingston is to just let things fall apart until we don't have. A functioning water system. Additionally. We don't even know the last time the city had to go on a boil order. So we aren't. This isn't nothing to be investing in the water system. When people turn on the faucet in Livingston, clean water comes out. We have, we aren't doing a city, a citywide boil order like some cities in Montana have had to do in the past year. And also, the question about. Why would we do this based on politics? One of the things about our form of government is we're not making decisions about clean water based on politics. And the advice that we get from like, the city manager and staff isn't based on. Um, a political year or. A vote at the ballot. It's based on what's good for residents and what's um, the best use of taxpayer funds. Clean water is not a partisan issue. Um, or I sure hope it's never a partisan issue and we're nonpartisan government. And the city manager. Is not making decisions based or recommendations based on politics. Is not making decisions based or recommendations based on politics. So I think that's important to note. I also would um just point out, we do invest in local economy. As a commissioner before COVID and after COVID, during COVID and after COVID, and we did put money into. Um, for example, this is just one example, MXU extension to provide additional services. Um, we changed the way loans were for small businesses. There was a few things that happened that the city did to support the local economy. And I know that not everybody comes to all the meetings or knows all the things we vote on, so I think it's important to offer one example, there's many more, I'm sure. Um, addition, we don't have the power to tax tourists, that's not within our jurisdiction. If people want um Livingston to have the power to tax tourists, they need to talk to our state representatives. Um, finally, my final point, what do we do? You know, the question is, what do we do? How are we helping the common person or the local business in Livingston? A reminder that we're the only entity that lowered taxes. State raised taxes, the county raised taxes, the city lowered taxes. And I would, I guess, offer that question to Mr. Gager, like, what are we doing about taxes now? Are we hiking up taxes on this budget cycle or how does it compare? To last budget when you recommended we lower the taxes?
Well, uh, we we know in this budget cycle that our mill rate has gone down. That is somebody function of taxable value and new construction. Um, and and so, uh, you know, I, uh, I, I, uh, again, the mill rate has gone down.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are, we are sensitive to the impacts of of all of our decisions on.
I I just think it's like important because people thought it was important enough to address. And I would say that this commission would agree with a lot of things that were said. And also some of the things just aren't in our power and what is in our power, we're doing what we can about. Um, being as conservative as possible. When it comes to taxing or fees. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newt. Um, and I would sort of maybe continue off of that, that thought of yours. We did lower taxes, everyone else raised them, the state in particular. You know, reassessed our properties, hiked up the rates, our property value rates. They've collected the money and they put it in the general, the state general fund. We don't get those funds, but we still have to continue to run, support. Put money into infrastructure into this city. We don't want, I I don't like to raise rates, just as everyone else has said, I don't like to pay more money either, but. We have to maintain our system. The Public Works Department, as Mr. or as Commissioner Willis said, was here two meetings ago. Talking about all the holes in the pipes, watching our clean water seep out of the pipes and into the ground. That has to be addressed. We have grown out of the main city center over the years. That costs the city money. Builders and developers like to say that they pay their way, but they don't. They may put the infrastructure in, but then the city has to pay to maintain it in perpetuity. So the more pipes we have and the further that they go out, we have to maintain those and that costs money. What I will say, when it comes to clean water, I spent several of the last week in a very small town. Outside of the state. Has city water, the water that comes out of the pipes is yellow, no one drinks that water. We purchased water to drink while we still paid for city water. So I know it's hard, I know it's difficult, I know it's a strain on everyone, but. We have to maintain these systems and we have to keep our water safe and we have to keep. A bit of surplus fund, so when some ungodly unfortunate thing happens and we blow some big pipes. We better make those repairs because people are still gonna want their water. Um, I know it's difficult, I know it's hard and we sit up here, we don't like to necessarily have to make these decisions, but we do. That's all I have. Anything else? Ready for a vote?
I do have, yeah, something else is on my mind, I would say. If I would be interested if the public wants us to not invest in water. And this is a totally legitimate and honest request. If the city is to lower water rates, what is the infrastructure that you're willing? To compromise? Because that's what it would be, so if people have like genuine feedback on I'm willing to compromise this neighborhood. I'm willing to compromise these pipes, I'm willing to compromise this system, these wells, whatever. Like, please email us, like, if you lower the rates, this is the infrastructure you should let go of. Because that's really what it comes down to. If we can't like maintain the system, we're talking about real impacts to real neighborhoods and people. And so like if people want us to lower the rates, I think we need to think about what the impacts of that mean. And then give the commission real feedback on like what you're willing to like trade for that, because that's what that is. From my perspective and where I sit, I mean, that's feedback that I would be interested in hearing because that's what you're asking from us. And so, please email us, everything's online, if you have suggestions on that, that's honest. That's all that I would say.
Thank you.
Can I add one point?
Absolutely.
A little deliberation. So prior to last December, I believe we were, the tiered rates were established November, December, right around that time?
About last August.
Last August, okay, so it was at the end of the cycle, apologize for that. So technically, I guess we're still in an experimental stage with what our revenues kind of look like with the coming up summer. Which is the building months, the establishment of a baseline months. Since we did make a large change to the structure of the water department. And how revenues are collected and assessed, et cetera. I'm proposing perhaps maybe we, is there a different rate that we can take a look at, lower than five point six percent, maybe half of that? Where for this year, let's just see how this thing slides out. Does the tiered rate system actually? Drive conservation? Or are rates just still the same and that's, that's the same point then boom, we just go for another year and just let it ride? But perhaps this year, because we're still figuring it out. Maybe coming at it with a little bit less of a, you know, not a, maybe, maybe half of the inflation rate. As an increase, just as a stopgap for while we're monitoring what this coming year looks like. And we take a look at it in August, when we've had a full year, a full cycle.
That's a question.
Yes.
Do you mean, um, take a look at changing the rate until August? Or do you mean, like, what do you mean, do you mean like not looking at this again till we have more information in August?
Yes.
Thanks, I was just trying to make sure I understood what you were asking.
No, thank you for actually clarifying my mind as well, that's what I'm talking about is let's, let's hold off on this rate increase. Until we have a full year cycle to to establish what it looks like with the tiered rates. And I don't know how that would impact the city, so that.
I think it impacts the budget.
No.
Right, like the budget cycle, which were.
Yeah, so I might let, if that's okay, let's let Mr. Gager address that if we can. And then Nancy, I'm just gonna let you know, we're in deliberation, so no more public comment on this one, but we'll have public comment on the next item, Mr. Gager.
Uh, Commissioner Willis, I, um, as an economist, I I I'd love the opportunity to uh to to do an experiment in a, you know, pilot project. Um, you know, I guess the the term that economists use, etc. is part of this, which is Latin for all else held equal. Um, unfortunately, uh, we don't have the ability to hold everything equal. And so, uh, last summer, um, was uh, was the first year that we we put in the tiered rates, but it was also a very wet year. And so, uh, folks, uh, irrigated less, used less water. And so, uh, while we expected a a bit of a revenue increase through the tiered uh rates. Um, the timing with which they took place in the wet year actually meant that we pumped less water and collected lower revenue than we had forecast and budgeted for. And so, um, you know, while while holding the rates out for another month or two, um, may provide us more data. Uh, that data really needs to be taken in context of the of the overall, you know, kind of meteorological climate that we're in. Uh, in that specific year, and so I think drawing conclusions on water usage based on only. Um, really ten or twelve months of of data probably um isn't really going to give us much insight. Um, we probably, in all honesty, need three to five years of summer usage. So we can normalize for different water amounts, really to find out if if we've um created any efficiencies or or any. And motivated any conservation more accurately through these.
Okay.
Anything else? So remind folks that the public, what we're voting on is to move. This rate, these rates forward to public hearings and we will hold two public hearings, is that correct?
I believe we will hold one.
One, sorry, okay, I don't know, I had to my head.
Because we vote twice.
We vote.
We vote now and then we vote.
Yeah, so we vote now and then we vote, so this will come before the commission again, um, and there will be, um. Public outreach, letting folks know this public hearing is happening and people will be able to comment on this item again. This is moving it forward, moving this item forward to a public hearing, um, just to clarify. Um, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll call please.
Chair Kell.
Four.
Vice Chair Newt.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Willis.
Four.
Motion carries. Right, moving forward. So this is action item C, resolution five one three two, a resolution, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana. Has its intent to adjust all rates for all customers of the City of Livingston wastewater system, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kell, the item for you is a resolution to contemplate an increase in wastewater. And um, as shown in the staff report and accompanying resolution. Uh, staff recommendation is an increase of eight percent to all sewer rates. And uh, this um is is done for for several reasons. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we have debt service covenants um that require a certain coverage ratio. Um, on our, on our bonds and uh the eight percent will help us uh ensure that we had achieved that coverage ratio. Additionally, you may recall that uh last year, um, the city uh did not execute on our capital improvement. Um, planned project in the downtown, um, between uh the the main and second street, the alley between main and second. Um, and and part of that, you know, quite honestly, was because the sewer fund did not have the resources to fund its component of the work. And so, uh, our team is uh still hoping to move forward with that. Uh, main, second, alley CIP projects and while also maintaining our debt service coverage ratio. And so we are recommending an eight percent increase and we expect that the average residential user. Um, will pay approximately a dollar seventy in additional costs as rated as a a result of this increase. Um, though that may go up to eight dollars and forty cents depending upon uh an individual's usage. So I will stand for any questions the commission may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions?
I'll ask an easy one, eight percent is the lowest possible, agrees?
Yes, sir.
Other commissioners?
Nope.
Clarifying questions? Um, I'll entertain a motion before we go to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five one three two and author as the chair to sign.
I'm talking.
Okay, motion by Newt, second by Schwartz. So we will go ahead and open this up to public comment for resolution five one three two.
Good evening, commission, again, Leslie Fidel, Livingston Area Chamber, and just wanted to clarify, I guess I could just. thirteen to sewer, what I meant by political year is that um bills go up and um we have, um. You know, people are holding on to their purse strings, the stock market's going like this, you know, there's a lot of things that happened during a political year. It had nothing to do with political voting about, um, you know, why this goes up or down or why I always even bringing this up. Just wanted to clarify that, um, I love the fact that you guys brought that up. Uh, you know, the sewer division, I I'm just, uh, there's some of the numbers that really shocked me on this, that uh eight employees, uh, eight hundred thirty one thousand dollars. Um, an increase of eight percent for the sewers, um, for businesses in this community. We again, maybe don't think that it's much for um a homeowner or a local business, it's a lot for the nonprofit that I run. It's an unfunded visitor center, um, having another increase. You, again, I'm gonna bring that up, you can keep saying that you're gonna use that money for something else, but one point five million dollars sitting there. I think an eight percent increase, I can't even find the page at this point, it's just absolutely incredible, um, to be able to. You know, I mean, what's, what's four percent, why, why, why eight percent on um a sewer increase, this is pretty incredible. The sitting with uh one point eight million is surplus. Again, after the expenditures that you're budgeting, one point five million dollars. Um, to again punish the local businesses, it's not just the water, it's the sewer, the garbage. And I know that you're working on a, um, what is that other utility that Shannon Holmes is working on? Uh, what is that called, stormwater utility? So there'll be another one coming down the road for people in this community. Um, I know that every time I get up here and I talk over the last five years of doing this, it doesn't mean anything and nobody really listens. But um, I appreciate it if I didn't, you know, some of my questions didn't get answered the way they did, it was. Not about political, about who's running, it's just what happens to the communities and the economy during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Nancy's raising her hand. Yes, come on, you can come right up, dear, I'm sorry.
Nancy, I have to throw a paper flying street unity. I also lived on eight, ten years calendar and there are problems with the sewer. And sometimes not where I am right now, but before, I was a lot, I could smell the sewer. Um, this is an old community. And it's really, and when I came here two thousand eight after living in other places. And I came here to retire, it was promised that every year, certain streets would be fixed and they weren't fixed. They went up to about, I think it was about F Street and not replaced. There are places on the west side, the east side, the north side, and there are sewer problems. And the idea was that we would be proactive. And we have not really been proactive, so on the sewer. And maybe we also, I don't know how to prevent sewer problems, but. One is if you go out and you smell something that's pretty bad, it's a sewer issue and people tend to ignore it, so. But but anyway, any help in that area, I think, is badly needed, not just for homeowners, but for businesses too. Because, well, I don't mention the business, but I don't go there because I can smell something.
Thank you, Nancy.
Oh, no.
Um, anyone else in the room?
But you just cannot do something. I just, Patricia Gray, two oh four, it's about our street, um. I just have a question. I did it ever, did we ever do an economic analysis of it? Did it pass this mind? By the way, I really appreciate your comments, Mr. Kale, about the further out, the more expensive it becomes, because that impact. And I appreciate your acknowledging that. And I appreciate our growth policy taking that in many ways into consideration. So intelligent growth is coming from our growth policy. And that involves water and sewer rates as well. But when we annexed Montague and Green Acres, did the city with the increased taxes, did they lose money? Or was there ever an analysis done on the cost of annexation for those two um areas? Just that's a question I have because we 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 take a look at annexation and.
I'm gonna call point of order, we're we're talking, discussing the sewer rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I seem to offend you.
No, it doesn't offend me, I just, it's good for the topic, that's all I'm asking.
Um, okay, but uh it seems like that has to be ta- taken into consideration as well. But uh as I just have to say that it I do, I think the level of percentage of the service is greater. When I first came here, there was a lot of streets that were gravel streets that were regular city streets that are no longer gravel streets. So the level of services has actually increased. But I would just, I'm just so curious about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tristan. Anyone else in the room? All right, let's go online, any comments, uh resolution fifty one thirty two online? I'll ask one more time, anyone online, feel free to come off mute. What is your name? All right, seeing none. Um I'll go ahead and close public comments. Um, okay. I think there were some questions in there I might ask the vice chair Newt if she could.
Sure, I'll start by saying thank you, Leslie. Leslie, thank you for the clarification, sincerely, I do appreciate it. I saw two things that Leslie brought up that I think are important points to get clarification on. Um one is why the eight percent increase, like why is that the number? Um could you, I was hoping maybe Mr. Gager could elaborate a little bit on why eight percent? And maybe like more laypeople terms, if you can? That's the first question from Leslie, yeah, that I would turn into a question.
Yeah, so the uh the eight percent, quite honestly, is um is to fund two um two things. Uh first and foremost, um we had a a large capital project that we were unable to um award a bid. We held a procurement process and it it was to um do work in a several block section, primarily on the alley between main and second street. And then also there was a little bit of work on uh Clark at the intersection of B and then Calendar out in the neighborhood of about tenth street. Um we were unable to award that contract because we did not have the funding um for the bids that came in. And and to be clear, there were three components of that project, street, water and sewer. Um and and while the street and the water funds could uh fund their share of the work, the sewer fund did not have the resources to do that work. And so um that that contract was not uh was not awarded uh because we did not have the resources. And secondarily, um we we also, uh as as everyone at home, um the city deals with with our uh inflation. Um and and just as I pointed out with the uh the water fund, the sewer fund is also expected to run a deficit this year, as shown on page fifty eight of the packet. Uh we expect revenues of three million forty seven thousand five hundred fifteen dollars, but we expect expenditures of three million three hundred twenty three thousand eight hundred forty seven dollars. And so um the the rate increases to help fund those capital projects while also helping us manage the inflationary impacts that we have seen uh from the general economy. Um eight percent in uh my mind and in the estimation of our finance director is the lowest that we would recommend if we are to accomplish those goals. Uh there is obviously policy uh included in this decision. Uh we could defer that work on the alley between main and second for another year or two years. Um we could reduce some of the other state of good repair work that we have scheduled for this year if the commission would like to uh pursue a rate less than eight percent. Um but because we have debt in the sewer fund or tied to our sewer, we do need to maintain a ratio of revenues relative to expenses of one point two five percent. And so revenues must equal one hundred and twenty five percent of our uh of of our operating uh expenditures. That's called the debt service coverage ratio. It's required by the banks to ensure that we're able to actually pay our bills. Um and so uh if if our uh increase of of the recommended eight percent is not um approved, you know, we're certainly happy to uh the finance director and I to go back and and find out what projects we could uh remove from the the anticipated work plan in the sewer fund this year and and try to work that down. But um I I will sit here today very honest. I don't think we could have a zero percent increase because of the debt service coverage uh ratio required if we also have.
And also the cost of infrastructure keeps going up. So if we delay work, this is one thing that we've seen, I think, at least Schwartz and I have seen. Like if you delay work, it just is more expensive the next time. Um but the other point that Leslie brought up that I think is good to shut light, good to shed light on is there's um one point five ish million in the ending balance of the sewer enterprise fund on page fifty eight. So could you explain or expand on that number? Um the idea of it?
Yep, that's the one.
The idea of it being um a surplus versus the idea of like what is, what is that number important for in terms of like these projects that you're talking about?
Yeah, so um I I will try my best to answer the question, I apologize if I if I don't fully. Um that one point five million dollar ending fund balance in the sewer fund is is our balance in our checking account at the end of the year. After we have taken in all of our revenue and we spent, you know, all of our money on our bills, uh that one point five million is what is left over. That one point five million um is is needs to be available not only for any um unforeseen repairs that may come up. But the bank also makes us keep a certain amount of money in the bank to um give them the assurance that we will pay our debt service in coming years.
Yes.
And so uh we, you know, we cannot go it below that one point to one hundred and twenty five percent debt service coverage ratio. Otherwise, we violated the covenants in the bonds and then we will start paying a penalty uh in the form of higher interest rates on those bonds. And so um that that million and a half sounds like a very big number um to to everyone at home. And frankly, it is a large number. Um but in the context of the expenses of the fund and the uh the capital needs that are, you know, supported by that fund, it really is not a a large number. Um i- in fact, it's, you know, only approximately equal to half the amount of money that we will spend this year to maintain and operate the sewer system.
So I'm just gonna do, since Commissioner Lyons isn't here, I'm gonna do a little reflective listening to one of my best Commissioner Lyons, right? Um part of the rates go just to cover the real costs in real time of the infrastructure, including everything from the pipes to the people who maintain the pipes. Part of the rate is to cover, we get these really great deals on loans, right? As a city compared to like what we could get at home for a home loan, like for if we're doing home improvements, cities get better deals. Called bonds, basically, I'm oversimplifying. But in order to get the better deal, so we can do big infrastructure projects like the water reclamation facility, for example, we have to commit to keeping a certain amount in the bank as a city, which means all of us taxpayers in order to get the good deal, so we can spread out the cost over a long period of time. So that's what the one and a half million is. It's not like um, it's not like fun money or anything. It's like money that we've committed back when we made a decision or back when previous commissions even made a decision to invest in some infrastructure. Is that basically a fair summary?
It it is a fair summary with the, you know, just the one clarification that actually corporate debt, typically they will have a debt service coverage ratio. Um so you know, we get a lower rate by virtue of um being a public entity that has the ability to uh tax and and levy assessments and all of that. So that's, that's part of why we get the municipal, you know, quote unquote, risk free rate. Um the debt service coverage is a requirement even of commercial plans out there.
Right, okay, so hopefully that helps. Hopefully that helps illuminate like or explain like that this isn't just money that's hanging out, this fun money, we're not like just sitting on taxpayer money, which I would not be supportive of. Um those.
But I, to be clear.
Yeah, I I I think that that's really, hopefully that gets at some of what Leslie was, yeah. So commissioners, other other questions, thoughts, deliberations?
Um I'll go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just regarding that, the alley work that Newt did be completed in the in that CIP. Regardless of what's even under the alley there, delivering meals on wheels in winter is an ordeal. And I'm one of the younger people that do it and uh it's icy, it's nasty and uh um just for that fact alone, I like to see it get done. But um that did go out to bid, you know, and it came in way over the engineer's estimates. And uh we were taken back by that and that was was that three years ago now? No, two.
A little over a year ago.
A little over a year ago, yeah, just and um and that was basically due to the materials more than anything, um inflation on that. I could say the same thing, you know, ditto again what I said on the sewer uh water race. Um but sewers, you know, leaking sewer pipes, remember goes into our groundwater, which goes into our aquifer. And uh I I find that this more troubling than um leaking water pipe. So um if we don't have a solid sewer system, um it doesn't mean much to our our drinking water, stuff like that. Again, I don't wanna see rates go up, but I understand where we're at and public works did a very, very good job of explaining, you know, a month and a half ago or a month ago um of why and where we're at. And uh with that, I'll yield.
Commissioner Willis, anything?
I can just say from experience, I remember having to lock in clients with material costs at a monthly rate for commercial projects that it was project manager of. Because the following month, everything was twenty percent, that's per month, twenty percent more for pipes. I was a, you know, plumbing, project manager, PVC, I mean, just reg- regular run of the mill stuff. Just ballooning costs.
Fly with.
Yeah, fly with unbelievable stuffs. So uh yeah, if you want to get some eye watering costs, open up a road and then do the right job with it. So I I don't like it, but I mean, I understand why we're doing it. I yield.
Thank you. Vice Chair Newt.
Um I think proactive planning is an economic benefit to taxpayers. Two examples were brought up, um annexation. So when developments outside of town are connected to city utilities, but they're not within the city of Livingston, that's an economic cost to people that live within the city. Um those analyses have been done, I'm sure. Also, the stormwater utility, um that's something that city staff are planning for because it's a state requirement. It's not something that the city is like, oh, let's do a stormwater utility. Um it's actually a requirement uh from state law to do a stormwater utility when we reach a certain population size. So I actually appreciate that staff has been proactive, thinking about how to plan for that before we get there. Otherwise, the fines are um incredible. It would be irresponsible of us to not be planning for it now. Economically, it would be very irresponsible for us not to be planning because there would be fines imposed potentially on the city um if we don't comply when we reach that population size. So I don't love the cost of inflation, just like everyone else. And also I think it's important to maintain infrastructure. And we've heard people talk about the importance of downtown and that's where some of this infrastructure is. Thank you.
Thank you. Um yeah, I will continue with that. I know uh Mr. Gager and I had conversations with some of the downtown business owners and building owners in that area that was supposed to have that capital improvement project last year. And they were very disappointed that that didn't come to fruition for them. Um and so, you know, we are investing in our downtown and our downtown businesses by doing these projects so that 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 they have what they need to have their businesses. Um so I know it's difficult, it's difficult for everyone, but um we need to keep investing in our our infrastructure. And we have to get ready for the stormwater. I was also gonna hit on that as we get closer to, I think, the population size of ten thousand. We have to be prepared for that. And I know we're not ready. I mean, I live on a street where the water doesn't drain. Um and it floods, you know, cause there's no, it's, it just doesn't work. Um and so we have to be prepared for all of that. And to think that we we don't want sewage water or stormwater flushing into the Yellowstone River. We're at the head, very close to the headwaters of the Yellowstone River. And it is our responsibility to keep that river clean for the people downstream from us. Um and so I take that very seriously as a community as well. Um that's all I have. Uh anything else?
I'm done.
All right, uh roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Four.
Vice Chair Newt.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Willis.
Four.
Motion carries. Okay, uh we are look moving on to action item D, resolution five one three three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to increase the rate for collection and disposal of solid waste in the amount of five percent per month for residential customers and five percent for commercial customers to become effective July of twenty twenty four and calling for a public hearing, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item for you is uh similar to the last two and this is a resolution related to solid waste rates. And as the chair noted, the staff recommendation is to increase all solid waste rates by a flat five percent, which is approximately in line with the rate of inflation observed over the last twelve months. I would uh point out that we expect that the average residential user will pay an additional dollar and twenty cents per month as a result of this requested rate change. And this follows a year in which rates were held flat. And so this is the first increase in in uh the last two fiscal years. And uh as you, as you know, uh we do have um some capital costs associated with this uh service that we provide, uh including most recently, you folks, uh through the the purchase of a uh the garbage truck. And uh we expect that to uh arrive in town any day now. And uh and then, as you know, we also have a a second uh truck that is expected um in mid-September. And uh all of this really follows uh some of the equipment problems that we had uh last summer and perhaps most acutely last Labor Day, um when we were uh without any operable uh garbage trucks and and actually made some calls around to uh the City of Bozeman and some of our other partners to find an operable garbage truck so that our crews could work on both the Saturday and Monday of Labor Day uh to ensure that solid waste service was uh was carried out in a sanitary manner. And so uh this charge really, if this recommended increase of five percent um is to ensure that the fund has the resources necessary uh to um to continue to operate and invest in our uh in our capital plan. So I will stand, uh as will finance director for any. Uh, as will Finance Director for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions? And I don't have any, but I really thought Commissioner, Commissioner Willis was gonna say something about the new garbage truck that was about to arrive.
I know all about.
When you're gonna do a ride along.
Question, do I still get a ride along? Of course, sir. Yes, it'll be here any day now.
Big truck, Commissioner Willis, you got a big machine, you got a question.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion and then we can open it up for public comments. I just want to do that.
That's well played.
Thanks.
Big boy.
We're gonna do a motion first, so let me get to a motion easy and then, but if you want to stand right there, that's fine, uh, but I need to see.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make it, I'll make it. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five one three three and authorize the chair to sign the resolution.
Right, that is a motion by Newt and did I have a second by Schwartz?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you.
Past eight o'clock, so we're all getting.
Much talk, yeah, sorry. I apologize. I, I apologize, Commissioner Schwartz, I thought I heard you say. So, motion minute and a second. I can't hear guys, apparently. Okay, now we'll open it for public comment. Nancy, please come on up.
This is, this is an area where I think we could cut things crease. Um, we don't recycle here, we've never recycled. I, years ago, I gave a presentation on recycling here. I worked for the Environmental Protection Agency in Seattle for a period of time. Now everything is in plastic, all my food is in plastic. I have, what do I do with my plastic? I can't fill my kitchen up with. Plastic, there's no. Places where you can put. Recyclable stuff, very few places. There used to be places like at Albertson's and different places, but there's nothing. We, we don't recycle. Uh, and I think that's a crime. I've been in Seattle where we did recycle a lot. The. City manager, two, two generations ago, I guess, said there's no money in recycling. People pay to have a recycling truck come and see. My garbage is like one-third of the garbage can. I did a presentation on how Bozeman has smaller garbage cans. I mean, you can have group garbage cans. There are so many areas in this area that we're not doing. So I'd say. Let's just cut this out and start thinking about how we can recycle garbage. I know it's a smelly business.
Thanks, Nancy. Leslie?
Leslie, by the Livingston area chamber. I'm sorry to keep you here so late. Again, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, um. The solid waste department division, nine employees, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars projected for twenty twenty four. I, I've found a job at the waste department, I'm just saying. The uh, one thing I wanted to bring up here, uh, so there are offsets. Um, I know that there's another can that's available at the waste department that you can get at your houses here in the city. And with also the um. The on here, it says the average resident user will pay between one dollar twenty and additional cost each month. As a result of this waste, this rate change, where's the business rate on here? So what is the average cost? What's gonna cost the business in this community? I would like to, you know, see that in average cost for our businesses because that just means that the businesses are gonna be increasing that. Onto the people that um. Come into their shops and their restaurants and, and bars and already, you know, the. The bins that are outside it, um Bennett Street are, I mean, there's, I've seen days where there's lines of people out there putting everything. Cause I know we've recycled from the visitor center, lots of books and paper products, but um, the glasses and the. You know, all kinds of cardboard and everything else that goes in those bins, which get really full really quick. But uh, you know, really we just like to see the cost of a business increase. And then this since it's the last increase that um, you're doing for the evening, what does all three come to? For an average for a community member, um, and the uh, businesses on average. Just so that everybody knows that they're gonna be looking at, and again, I agree with um, Commissioner Willis that. It would have been nice to see a whole year's worth of numbers before, you know, jumping into. Some of these increases, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else in the room? No one in the room? I'll go online. Anyone online would like to make comments? Um, on resolution fifty one thirty three. Arlene, I think I saw you come off mute.
Thanks, Carrie. Yeah, Arlene Romer de Feltria, one oh six El Lane. And just a question that's come up in the past about. Uh, going to some other system of disposing of solid waste. We are filling up a big landfill and. I don't think anyone feels really good about that. I've heard that Billings has some really um. Unique and innovative ways to recycle there and their um. You know, and their waste disposal, so I, I think we probably all feel better if. We weren't just loading up trucks and dumping trash, so I don't know if there's any, anything in the works to think about. You know, or a really good incinerator or, you know, some, just looking into, you know, some other plans.
Thanks, Arlene. Anyone else online? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Had a few questions in there. Uh, Mister Gager, I wonder if you might um. Touch on the recycling that we do, that we do do and.
I, yes, I, I would be happy. Uh, while we don't have curbside recycling, we do actually have our drop off recycling, not the transfer station. And that is available twenty-four seven um, for all, all members of the community. And um, yeah, we are, please know, we are aware of, of, of what many other cities are, are doing and including Billings. I uh, have pretty regular conversations with the city management team over there. And uh, there are some exciting stuff that uh, that we're investigating here in Livingston as a example of that.
Thank you. And then we had some other questions, um. The average costs um, overall for the rate increases, I think we even have it here on page eighty-one. On page eighty-one of the budget that I just wondered if you would.
E- exactly, and so the um, on, on, uh, you know, if, if one looks at, at page seventy-nine. At the, uh, the highest weight, which is one quarter, excuse me, nine twenty-one to nine sixty. Um, that, that uh, is a, a, a cost of a hundred and thirteen seventy-seven. Uh, which means there's a, an approximate five dollars a month cost on that highest rate for solid waste. And then doing some quick math here out of the packet, uh, your second question I think was, what is the, the overall increase? And so when I look at a consumer who are a residential accounts, who are the vast majority of our accounts here in the City of Livingston. I think you saw on the water side, it's seventy percent of our users, uh, and that would tie to sewer. And, and when I look at that, uh, as, as noted in the staff reports, we expect the average. Uh, residential consumer to see an increase in water of about eighty-five cents a month. Sewer about a dollar and seventy cents a month and trash a dollar and twenty cents a month. For a total of approximately three dollars and seventy-five cents of uh, estimated increase in a bill. And, and I will say I am, I am one of those average users uh, with a, you know, current bill of, of, well, mine's about a hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents a month. So, um, you know, on, on all of these, that's, uh, we, we get to about three dollars and seventy-five cents per month next.
About forty-five a year.
Forty-five a year. Thanks for the money. Good jobs. Commissioners, other questions?
Yeah, there is a. I believe on page seventy-nine.
Oh, yes, there was the.
Mister Gager, yeah, the commercial solid waste rates, isn't that the business rate for like? Because solid waste is weighed instead of per can.
Yeah, and so I was kind of going with that with the max and that.
So I think Leslie was asking where the business rates were listed and I believe that covers the business rates, is that correct?
It does.
Okay, so it's page seventy-nine. The second chart. In the packet is the. Yep, it just says commercial solid waste rates. Kind of the top of it, between those two charts.
Thank you. Commissioners deliberation, comments?
Sure, I'll go.
I um, I think a few years ago, we actually, Nancy's gone, so she.
No.
Hopefully she'll hear this or we, somebody sees her, we can pass it along, but I think a few years ago, we were bringing up the idea of different sized cans.
Yeah, that, yeah. You've got a better memory than me, but yeah, you're right.
Cause I love public works topics. I try to remember all of them. Um, I didn't wear my shirt tonight. But I should have. You didn't see it, I made, I finally had the public shirt.
No, I saw it online. Yeah, I.
I think we talked about it a few years ago, um, different sized cans and there was a cost. To the city and the community of that kind of investment because of the trucks that are required and the equipment to retrieve it. Which Bozeman probably has a different setup. I don't know what Bozeman has compared to us. However, I think it would be interesting. Potentially to keep it in mind, um. When we go into some of our long-term planning conversations, because we have talked about composting in the past and. Waste reduction, so I think it could be interesting. For a long-term conversation is um, what might that look like for a city of our size? Or. You know, what is recycling? Arlene was bringing up recycling too, in addition to Nancy. What might those look like if we were to incorporate them into some long-term conversations as a city? I would be open to that. That doesn't answer the question for now. Um, I support the five percent increase because I think we need the equipment. It's equipment we probably needed a very long time ago and I think it's reasonable to have. Equipment that works for staff when they show up and to have our trash taken away because we're paying for it every month to have it taken away from our house, so. That's what I would say.
Other Commissioners?
I still like the idea of having control over our garbage pickup as opposed to private vendor. It, you're at the, at the mercy of somebody that you really have no control over, you know, for twelve months, so this is something that we can. That we employ people and uh. Yeah, and with that, we have a lot more control over, not so much. Um, well, we, I guess we. Do far as disposal, you know, our choices are Logan and uh, in Great Falls and uh, we have to. Do what's, you know, the least expensive, you know, for, for our community and stuff like that, which is still Great Falls. Which, you know, sounds weird, but. Um, it's cheaper to send it up there than it is to take it to Logan, so. Are you?
Commissioner Willis?
Well, wish in one hand, I wish we still had the incinerator and upgraded it as appropriate, some number of years ago. Many years ago, uh, but that's not the truth anymore, so. I like the idea of in-house. Waste collection. Uh, again, we can keep controls on it. We didn't raise rates last year and such. And we gotta have equipment that works, so um, I don't. I don't see any uh. I don't have any grievances with this. Are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I realize we missed something else. Leslie had asked about the alternative can that we do have here in town and so we do have the green can. That we're able to use throughout the summer. If folks choose to do that, it's a up charge of six dollars a month? Is that correct? Um, so that is available for city residents if they so choose to put. Green waste in, mostly yard waste, um, and last year we were told we could put some food scraps and pickpockets in there. Um, but we have had discussions about potentially looking at a bigger composting. Operation in the city and what that might look like and um, I know that we've explored some of those options and I think maybe continue to do that. Um, which could change or offset so, some of these things. Um, I do know, I think prior to me being on the commission that we hauled. The county garbage, correct? And then they opted to step away, which then changed things for us. Our volume went down, so our, our rates changed around there, um, so there has been some changes over the years, um, that have made it. Probably more expensive for us to do what we were doing previously. We need the garbage trucks, to be honest, and we can't have staff ready to go standing around filling their thongs and there's not. Uh, equipment to do the work, so. Um, that's all I have. Anything else? Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Four.
Vice Chairman Newt.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Willis.
Motion carries. It is eight thirty-three. I'm wondering if I could get a. Potentially, we may need to extend the meeting at eight thirty.
Motion to extend.
Okay, I have a motion to extend a second, all in favor.
All right.
Hi.
And then I wonder if we might have a motion for a ten-minute break.
Motion for a ten-minute break.
I have a motion from Newt and a second by Willis.
James got me.
Okay, uh, so we'll be back at eight forty-three. Uh, okay, so welcome back. Uh, we are gonna call back to order this meeting of the Livingston City Commission. And continue on down our action items. We are at action item E, policy discussion and direction regarding. Sidebuck uses, Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is uh, is actually a, an opportunity for uh, you folks to give. Um, me some, and some staff, some direction. Um, it has come to our attention. Uh, recently that we perhaps have some um, area for, for modification and, and how we do business. Um, and I would say that we are joined by uh, several representatives of the state's Alcohol Beverage Control Division. And city staff has had a, a number of conversations with our friends up in Helena. Over the last few weeks, um, and, and these conversations actually really started in regards to events in the city. Um, and, and as we uh, got into conversations, um, just about alcohol consumption and sale in general. Um, we recognize that there are perhaps, uh, like I said, some areas uh, for improvement in, in how we conduct our business at the City of Livingston. And um, specifically, uh, a- as noted in the staff report, there is an allowance. Um, in the municipal code that um, the uh, city commission or chief of police. Uh, may issue a permit for, for folks to um, obstruct the, the street or public right of way. Um, at, at this point, we don't have any, uh, any of those permits that, that have been logged or issued. However, uh, we have some, um, some businesses that are, are conducting business uh, off-premise in the city right of way. And um, so in an effort to um, really clear up some of those. Um, issues and, and some of the uh, unintended consequences that may arise from those issues. I'm here uh, before you this evening to um, really get an understanding from the commission. Um, on, on your uh, level of desire to um, allow some of these uh. This conduct of business in the public right of way to occur and, and most specifically, um, I, I think this um, pertains to dining. Um, in, in the right of way, whether it's on the sidewalk or, or elsewhere. And, and, and uh, so related to um, that, if the, the commission is, is um, open to uh. Allowing um, some of this, these activities to continue, uh, which, which I think there is certainly um, economic benefit to our businesses. Uh, residents and, and community members to some of the activity that goes on. You know, from a staff standpoint, we would like to uh, really create a pathway to compliance for some of these businesses to engage in this conduct. Um, because uh, you know, uh, the, the, the second really. Um, because uh, you know, uh, the, the, the second really part of this is, is whether or not when, when folks are engaging in. Um, you know, some of this uh, dining on the, on sidewalk, um, whether they, they can or should be consuming alcohol. Um, because there are s- some requirements of alcoholic uh, beverage license holders from the state. Um, that they need to treat, um, you know, the area that they serve and allow alcohol to be consumed in a, in a different way than is currently happening. Um, they, they actually need to extend their premise outside of the building to, to incorporate that, that space that may be on the sidewalk. Um, really to be in compliance, um, and, and so really that's, that's kind of the, the conversation here is, is do we want to. You know, kind of continue to allow and, and encourage, uh, because we've heard from some new business owners in the restaurant bar space, they would like to allow. You know, on, on sidewalk dining and, and alcohol beverage consumption, and so. Um, if it's the, the will of the commission to uh, allow that behavior to continue and to grow. Um, then, you know, secondarily, uh, the next item is, is an ordinance uh, to modify our um, open container. And alcohol beverage consumption, um, provisions of the municipal code, uh, just to allow that behavior, because currently. Um, people are not allowed to consume alcohol or have an open container uh, in the public right of way, except for at an approved special event. And so, um, you know, the, the, the step someone takes outside of the door of an establishment at this point. Um, they're not necessarily in compliance with local or, or state law, so. Uh, we, we'd like to really just clean some, some things up, really, as much as anything for the, the benefit of our uh, alcohol beverage license holders. So, um, I, I will stand for any questions, um, and then as I mentioned, we've got some. Uh, we've got some folks here from the state's Alcohol Beverage Control Division as well.
Okay. Um, and so direction here, just to be clear, you're looking for some. Direction from us, we won't be voting on anything particular around this one issue this evening.
That, that's correct, and just to be clear, if the direction is that the commission would like uh, some of this behavior to continue. Uh, staff will set up a, a permit process. And um, and work with our partners at the state, now just to be clear, um, I've included in the staff report some examples of what other cities. Uh, around the state do, um, for some, it, it is an administrative process, and for others, it is um, codified uh, in the municipal code. And, and certainly, you know, if uh, if the desire is for us to do a, a, an administrative permit process, uh, we will establish certain requirements. You know, related to hours of operation, uh, maintenance of, of, of that common area. Um, but then also, you know, passage through there, the American Disabilities Act uh, requires a five foot uh, clearance on, on sidewalks, and so. Certainly, we would, we would uh, use that as a minimum, our sign code requires six foot clearance, you know, passageway. Uh, around signs that are placed on the sidewalk, so um, we, we would, you know, work administratively uh, with, with applicants there.
Commissioners questions? To Mister Gager?
Go for it.
I have one round about. Are you ready?
Yeah.
So. I noticed. That the enterprise talked about this a little bit. This agenda item. And I just wanna get some clarity around this issue, cause I think there's layers of government for this one. Um. I'm hoping that Mister Gager can illuminate. Who has which powers, since the word power was used in the article, um. Who has which power and which authority when it comes to like state? City. And then within the city, city commission and city manager and city staff. Around this particular issue.
Uh, yes, so uh, just to, to be clear, the uh, the, the. The power to, you know, allow folks to bend alcohol does not sit at the local level, it's regulated by the state, and so that's why we got. Uh, our, our friends from Helena down here this evening, um, and so the, the state retains the power to. Uh, a- allow whether, uh, to decide whether or not someone's, you know, enabled to serve. Um, a- at the local level, really, we have control over, over the public spaces and the public right of way, and so that's. Um, that is kind of why this is coming before you folks is in the context of um, service outside of the premise. Um, because, you know, the premise needs to be extended into that public right of way, if that is the, the, the goal there. Um, a- and then within the city, you know, certainly, um, the, the city commission is vested with. Uh, with power to set policy um, and, and give direction, uh, you know, the city manager, I, I carry out the administrative affairs of the city. Um, and I, I have those powers vested in me either by uh, Montana Code annotated or by the city commission. Um, and so, you know, I, I, I work within the powers only that are granted to me um, by you and the state.
So to be clear, the city manager does not give establishments power. To serve alcohol or not to serve alcohol.
That is correct.
That is. This, neither does the city commission, we just. Ours is more about like the space. Okay. I just wanna be clear because. It's an important distinction. That's my clarifying question, so.
Others?
I have a quick question. Ordinance two zero nine nine, uh, February sixteen twenty one. Um, I remember. Back in the day, um, before that, that I believe uh. There didn't used to be. Uh, an ordinance about. Drinking a beer on the street. Public rights of sidewalks. Um. In fact, it was, that was quite a conversation for a lot of my friends with, so that you could actually carry a beer to or a cocktail with you from one bar to another. Not a big deal, I'm gonna assume that's changed.
So, um, you know, uh, certainly that, that kind predates me. Um, in, in review, just in preparation for this, the twenty twenty one ordinance actually was passed. Uh, and that was related to marijuana and the, the carry of, of marijuana. Um, the open container, uh, in my research, the open container requirement was pre-existing to that. And I'm looking over at our police chief who's been on the force for seventeen years. And I'm, I'm wondering if there was ever a time in your memory on the force where open containers were allowed on the streets, sir?
As long as I've worked here, there's always been an open container ordinance that has not been allowed. The enforcement has been. Lax at times.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, that clarifies that for me, that aspect of things. Um, so are we going to then be looking at this as like a lease? Of the, of the um, of the sidewalk, I guess it would be?
So the um, certainly we could, we could go that route, a, a great many other cities have, you know, an application fee or a permit fee. Uh, but then don't necessarily charge an ongoing, you know, rental of the sidewalk. Um, that certainly would be kind of an, an area here that, that we could discuss. Uh, from a policy standpoint, if we would like to, uh, to have that, my recollection is the city of Billings has a small like. Dollar, two dollar per square foot rental rate per year for some of their um, private properties that extend out into the right of way, so that. You know, there are cities that do that, but um, you know, I'm open to the, the commission's direction on this one.
Thank you. I yield.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and there's a lot of good examples here, you know, with Missoula and Bozeman and stuff like that. You know, certainly, the, the homework's kind of been done. You know, really, um, it's. You know. Have gone into real detail here, but. Um, yeah, basically sidewalk cafes, you know, serving alcohol. And, you know, obviously. I think. Missoula permitted from April to October or something like that, and uh, and the. That area has to revert back to. So originally it's a full sidewalk, so. I'm all for explo- exploring this and moving forwards with it, I think it might, um. Get away from, from old downtown. I've had, had alcohol beverages outside, that's some of these establishments, not replacing that. That was no new. So, okay, I yield.
Thank you. Um. A couple, I have, I have a couple of questions, one, um. We're sort of going down this road. Because. The state has made us aware that we've sort of missed something, correct? And the state had maybe contacted some of our businesses that have been doing this for a while. And let them know that we've. Missed a step, is that sort of why we're here now?
It, it is in part that um, through conversations with the state, we've recognized that there is a bit of a gap, and then also we've um. We've had some businesses, uh, you know, bars and restaurants turn over, and the downtown Livingston Bar and Grill has a new owner, you know, the sport. Building has a new owner, um, and we've got some others, so we've got some new um, folks in town who perhaps have done business in other places. And are familiar with, or they look around at their neighbors and say, hey, I want what they've got. And so, you know, there's, there's two reasons really why we're here today.
Okay. So if we move this to a administrative. Process. Who, who on the staff would be the person, would like, would be the issuer of the permits, does that?
Yeah, um, e- excellent question, so uh, a- as I noted in the staff report. Section twenty six dash thirty five of Billings Municipal Code does provide the police chief. Um, the ability to, to issue these permits, which um, you know, somewhat actually would make sense in this situation, because the. Police chief is, is really kind of our local agent who um, signs off on a lot of other alcohol related requests and permits. Catering permits, that type of thing when they come, um, and, and so uh, in that context. You know, certainly the, the chief would be supported by the planning director and public works department as we work through some of this. Um, but thankfully, um, most of the, because the state is the one that has the approving authority. Most of the review work actually was handled at the state, they're the ones that would approve, you know, kind of the site plan. And, and give that okay, and, and we're kind of that secondary administrative approval. Um, certainly, they need to see that the city, you know, is, is, you know, accepting and, and willing to allow this behavior to work on the sidewalk. But at the end of the day, when it comes to site plan approval, that rests up with the city.
Okay. Um, do you have, I. Commissioner Willage sort of asked about, oh, like, or is it a rental fee, is it a permit fee? What is your inclination, and, and if it was gonna be like a permit fee, what, what do you, what would be the thoughts on what that? Fee might be?
My, you know, my, my inclination really would be to just kind of leave it at a, a permit application fee. Um, and, you know, a lot of our, our application fees are about sixty dollars.
Okay.
Um, and, but I, you know, I, I will point out the, the materials, you know, there are, there are some cities that, you know, provide the permit for multi-years. You know, upfront, and so, um, I, I, I think that there probably is some. Uh, some good logic to that insofar as. You know, the, the sidewalk layout really probably won't change year to year, because again, there's an administrative step with the state to get that approved. Um, and so I, I would be comfortable with a multi-year permit uh, with no rental fee, and really just an application fee to cover the costs of the year.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so. Clarifying questions are handled. Um, I think.
One more.
Okay.
This is limited specifically to sidewalks and not. Parking or boulevards?
So the, the way this is written actually is, is not um, limited to, to just sidewalks. We are talking about if the full public right of way, whether it's streets, alleys, uh, or sidewalks. Um, some of that is um. From what we heard during the downtown master plan process, there were some folks who uh, you know, really, you know, were encouraged about opportunities to activate alleyways. Um, or other spaces adjacent to their business, and then we also recognize that. Um, there may be some sidewalks in um, adjacent to businesses that might not be wide enough to allow. The five foot ADA um, pathway through, which then might encourage them to, you know. Kind of seek the use of parking spaces or other areas, other parts of the right of way. Um, and that's, that is somewhat common in, in other cities, other places, um. In Montana and otherwise, so, you know, that's policy direction also that, that we would welcome if. If there's no desire for the commission to um, do anything with parking areas, then we would certainly take that into account in the permit process.
I think I would like to see them. Separated out.
So that, yeah.
Versus alley.
So let's, let's hold that so we can deliberate, but, but let's open it up for public comment, so we can uh, get public comment, um, and then we will. Have that, just those discussions, if that's okay, okay, Leslie, it looks like you're ready to come up, come on up.
This is something I know about. Okay, so here in Livingston. Covid is what really kicked this off, so I know Richard very well at the mint, and what he was trying to accomplish during the time that. Didn't have people inside the bar, um, up to this point where he got the approval to be able to put the tables outside and put them against his building. The two opportunities were to put a railing around it like they do over at the depot when they have their events, when they have. When um, the gal that owned the, the wine bar, uh, that Debbie. Um, to be able to have the tables and to be able to drink the wine outside was having a little gated area. And then she would just move the tables in, take the gate away when they weren't having their event. Um. The community has always done the right thing here when it comes to our businesses, nobody's acting, you know, maliciously, inappropriately. Wanting to just loosely, you know, I appreciate that, um, uh, you know. Watch people with alcohol walking between the bars. Um, I uh, have been, by the way, uh, on the DUI task force for um, over two and a half years, uh, almost three, almost three years now. Um. And working with Justin Matthews, I went to the Southwest Montana, um. Uh, event last year that rolled out all the new rules and regulations. Um, which was very informative, and we did this because, and again, I came up in front of the commission at one point to ask about, you know. Things that we could do to help the, the police department in identifying people that were underage drinking by using the wristbands, which I have a stack of on my office. And that we'll be using for the parade, um. There are different opportunities, I think, other than just making this ordinance, but changing a few other ordinances in our community. I just think that um, when we engage our community and our businesses and do what we can to help them benefit. Um. You know, is, is good, right, um, to help them, especially when we give them higher rates, um. There are businesses that don't have enough staff to be able to do things outside, like the um, Livingston Bar and Grill, and even though they do. They would have enough room to put little single tables down the side like Richard does at the mint. But uh, like the sport used to have outside, and now, you know, new barbecue place, well, we don't know if he's gonna be doing that or not. There are different um, businesses that would definitely like to put little two tops and four top tables, now, you know, with the Richard and what they do there, they don't send uh, waitresses out there. You go inside, you order your food, you order your drink, then they could be given a bracelet, oh, by the way, if they're gonna drink outside at their little tables, which should have like a little fence around it. And. You know, all these little things, I think there are so many different things that could be put into these codes that would benefit the businesses, that would be, you know, really good. Um, there is one aspect in here that hasn't been brought up that I did read, which had to do with events. Now, um, when we're talking about the Christmas stroll, the parade to the biggest event that do close many streets, many streets. We've not had issues with, again, if we use the bracelets, which all of the bars this year are gonna be using, by the way, to help. Um. For people that are gonna be walking around, there's not really a way to put a beer garden for the, the parade. And we tried one year, put the first block, which was taken away from the parade. Into an event location, and that just, it didn't benefit, and there's, I mean, I don't know how you're gonna. Um, you know, do that other than utilizing the bracelets and making it to a two hour period or to a two day, within a two hour, within a two block. Um, when you're doing something at the fairgrounds or at the Elks Lodge, or you're, you know, closing maybe one block for the um, Oktoberfest. Doing something like that where it's within a, like a block period, you know, like having a little wine bar, wine beer area. But um, we really need to talk further about like events for like large scale events, like the parade. Right, makes sense, and I would definitely appreciate that time, and I think all of you, you understand actually what I'm talking about, so. Thank you, and looking forward to more conversation on this for sure. To benefit the businesses.
Your favorite agenda item of the night, I can tell.
Yeah. Why we did.
Thank you. Okay, and then, thank you, any, any other public comments? I don't see anyone in the room. Jack, I see you, go ahead, sir, online.
Just um, one, one comment, I think I. For a number of years, I've done walking tours for the museum downtown, and I know that. In several instances. People that have tables and chairs out on the street without a fence around them. Uh, tend to. Encroach on the walking area there. So I think something that you really should consider i- if you're gonna. Encroach on the walking area there. So I think something that you really should consider i- if you're gonna. Do something is to require a fence around these tables. Uh, much like uh, I know Billings does and, and I think Bozeman does. It really helps contain it. Uh, and it's not the. Business owner that's, that's doing the uh, encroachment, but the people. And, and they, you know, they gather around the tables and they move the chairs out and pretty soon. Instead of uh, five foot for walking, you've got uh, maybe one foot or, or two feet. So really consider that. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Thanks, Jack. And then I just, I, I do wanna be clear. And Mr. Gager, you can maybe help me here. We're, we're talking, we're, we've got two items on the agenda tonight. First is the, the actual sidewalk, are we gonna allow dining on the sidewalk? This next agenda item, which we'll get to, is digging more deeply into the alcohol. Um, and so some of those questions, I think, that Leslie brought up might be addressed in this next. Would that be correct?
That is correct, and I would also just point out that we've got two experts here from the state. It's the outreach group, they're not here in the enforcement group, we're here to write tickets, but uh, having spent a few uh, moments with these ladies today. I think there's something we could all, especially large event operators in Livingston, learn from chatting with them because. Um, the look on Lisa's face probably tells me that there's a few things that were said relative to events in Livingston that might not actually comport with state law. So.
Okay, so shall we w- wait to discuss those in this next agenda item, which we're actually talking about? Events and open container and keep this discussion to the sidewalk cafe. Does that make sense?
I think that's, that was really my intent.
Okay.
And if, if the desire is to allow, uh, you know, alcohol on the sidewalks within these permitted areas. Um, that, that really is what the second item was for, because we have two readings of an ordinance and then thirty days till it takes effect.
Great.
Which means that sometime in mid-July, um, you know, some of the behavior could have them.
Okay, so, okay, that's the piggyback question, yes. Are we talking about sidewalks? Are we talking about sidewalks and other public right of ways, including? Boulevards and parking spots? And because that was something that Commissioner Willidge had brought up, so I just wanna make sure.
And, and, and that's, that is part of the direction.
Okay, thanks.
From you, we have it set up as, as right of lanes generally because that is the language that's um. Is in the ordinance currently.
Can you specify what public right of way means since it's a real term?
Yeah, it's, it's um, basically the public area outside of what is privately owned. And so streets, sidewalks, alleyways, and you know, generally outside of the street. Um, you know, there is, there is a little bit of a buffer that is undeveloped, and I guess there I'd be talking about like. Uh, US eighty-nine, the right of way is not just the paved area, it actually extends out from.
So street, sidewalk, alley, boulevards, boulevards? And parking?
Yeah, really, any non-parceal area, and you know, when that, I refer to a parcel, not just, you know, where you or I may live. Uh, but also, you know, private property like City Hall, you know, that wouldn't be considered public.
Correct. But like, okay, that's great. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're being precise.
Okay, so now.
We deliberate.
We're in this deliberation and also just uh, giving Mr. Gager feedback. So that's kinda where we're at.
Yeah.
Mr. Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Willidge.
Yes.
I apologize.
Sure, so uh, yeah, I'd like to see uh, alleys uh, vehicle rights of way and pedestrian rights of way. Split into three for this purpose, for. The use of permits. I mean, I don't have a problem with the, you know, table fenced in on the sidewalk, but I feel like eating up parking spots. Is, I mean, people are conditioned to drive on the road and expect parking spots, and when you have a mishmash of. Uh, a potential, or whatever, pop-up, outdoor type of thing, and then it, something else, you're mixing cars and people. And I feel like that's gonna end up with friction, and usually people lose out on the friction part of, of that, so. Sidewalks, you have uh, people walking, dogs, uh, you know, wheelchairs, you have. People moving around, but you're not out in the street. Same thing with the alley. Because you have vehicle traffic generally through alleys. And so when you start to mix people in seated or doing something. Then I feel like you're, you have a potential for overlap that is not gonna work out well, there's something. In my humble impression, the, the estimation. So I'm not against any of this. I like the idea of keeping a six-foot eighty-eight path and fencing. Zones to keep compliant with state law, but I, I don't think I like the idea of um. Personally, I don't like the idea of putting, incrusting into the street. Or really into the alleys either. Alley's less so, just less traffic there. I yield.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I don't have a problem with keeping it all in one, cause first of all, if, you know, we require a site plan, you know. You know, review, um, everything has to go through review, basically, so. Um, I think that could be taken care of at that time. No, this is insidious, you know. They have, you know, cafe seating, you know. Here in, in this alleyway. Um, or that, I think um, common sense would dictate a lot of this. Anyway, but I, I wanna explore all, all options. I want all options on the table, so. Um. And see what comes back, so. I give consent to. It's for all options, yes, please do, it would be fun.
Vice Chair Noots.
First, my deepest apology and regret to the state of Montana.
We're still sitting here.
We're entertaining.
Please be patient with, please be patient with our city as we work to become compliant. Um. Thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for working with Mr. Gager and any of the other staff today, and however long this has been going on. I have overheard some conversations in City Hall. Thank you to your staff who also have been diligent when no one has been watching. And I just happened to be lucky enough to over here when I was in City Hall doing Commissioner stuff. Oof. That was a stressful moment for Commissioner, like, me, you have to tell you. Um, like, oh god, this is happening, okay. I like the idea of this being administrative, first of all, I'll say, because um. It falls in line with other things that we have as administrative practices. Whereby, we're not always the best decision-makers for safety first, like, like where can this thing happen? Like, let's say, um, I don't know, there's a million different examples and I can't think of any good ones, but like. We're not always like the experts on like what's the safest. Thing, because we're not seeing the same things. For example, the chief is seeing day in and day out, so I like putting the power with the people. Who can respond quickly, so the business owners don't have to wait a month and then thirty days after the vote. Yes, for it to be like in effect. If something needs to be dealt with right away, and we have staff working almost every day of the week, they can just deal with it immediately. So that's why I like it administrative. Um. I like. The ability for businesses to be able to use the public right of way. For all the reasons that people have already said. I'm open to staff recommendation on. Permit costs versus other options. Um. I think perhaps as we define what public spaces we're okay with, that might change staff recommendations, right? I. One thing we haven't talked about that I would be interested in is what zones this applies to. Um, because we have public right of ways all over town, but I don't necessarily think this is appropriate all over town. For example, I would think that it would be appropriate in the central business district, central business district. Neighborhood, commercial, mixed-use, highway, commercial zones is the most obvious ones where we might expect businesses like this to operate. Or any business that might want outdoor space to operate. Um, I'm open to sidewalks and alleys and parking spaces. Mainly for the reason we already allow certain businesses to operate in parking spaces, but those aren't brick and mortar businesses. So to me, it feels equitable to be open to. For brick and mortar businesses to also have access to the same space as non-brick and mortar businesses. Um. That said, I think that it's important to think about zones because we don't necessarily want. Um. You know, cafe seating in the streets all over town to Commissioner Willidge's point. Um, I wouldn't necessarily expect that this would be great to have businesses hanging out in parking spaces like in an R-two, for example. Like residential neighborhood. Yeah. Which is a thing that could happen if we're not intentional about where we allow it. So I'm open with it, I'm open to it as long as I guess we're thinking about zones as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's all that I have for round one.
Um. I. I would like to leave it open to your all forms of right of way as well, as well. Um, just. For the exploration and to look at it, my thinking really is, we have this downtown master plan that's about to come out, I'm curious to know what the. What the consultants are gonna say about that. I learned from some constituents today, a, a new term called parklets, which are in. Parking spaces, um, and saw some mock-ups that were pretty attractive and made sense, and I felt could be saved. Um, so I would like to leave that open because I want. We're paying this consultant, who's done all this outreach to our businesses, to see what they come up with and have the op, op, the option to be flexible. Um, I do agree too that if, you know, a business is not on a sidewalk, that is. Large enough to allow them to have seating. As other businesses might, if there is another option that would work for them, I think it makes sense to be able to look at those options. Um. You know, this is dining on the sidewalks has been, has been going on in Livingston for a long time. I wanna see it continue. It's great for the businesses, the community loves it, I think as well, and it, you know, I, I like to see it continue. Um, a- and also, you know, I realized that. Businesses weren't in compliance, but we as a city were not in compliance either, so I would like to make it as easy as possible for the businesses. Who've been doing this for years to be able to continue in that. That space, um. Because honestly, you think about the addition of tables to a restaurant, and as summer comes up. These businesses have probably already hired more staff and done some of the other things that they. Need to do to be able to service more tables than they normally might not have, that they wouldn't have in the winter time. Um, so I would like to just make this as smooth and as easy as possible for the businesses that are already doing this. Um. That, that's what I got. Anything else? Do we need to do another round?
Move on.
Hmm, do you have something else?
Well, Jack did bring up like fences.
Oh, yeah.
And you brought up parklets, which I think perhaps gets to, potentially could. Be a consensus point for what Commissioner Willidge was bringing up. Like protected spaces, basically parklets are, um, if those options could be included, to see if there's like. A way to, for the commission move together.
Mm-hmm.
On options.
So from the city's standpoint, um, that all sounds reasonable. Again, like I said, the um, the, the power ultimately rely, or lies. Or lies up at the state level. And so um, any, any site plan, any, you know, alteration to the premise that's in, you know, uh, alcohol permit. Ultimately is, is the state's decision whether or not they'll allow it. So um, we will, we will make, uh, I guess based on three out of four um, comments, you know, we will, we'll make this. Program as expansive as we can, um, you know, insofar as it makes sense for what we think will actually be approved.
Yeah. Want to?
Okay. Anything else?
Um, well, I just, I really wanna, I value, you know, Commissioner Willidge does have a different, a different perspective, and I think. And I wonder if like, when you think about the administrative perspective with permit fees or something, there could be distinctions between the areas that he's identified. As being different areas. So like, fees are a part of it, right? Like, what do we incentivize and what are we?
Oh, I see. So thinking like, if you're.
If you're using this.
Parking space, if you're like, it's gonna cost you more, it's gonna be a more expensive permit.
If you're using, if you're taking up a space that's like a shared-use space versus just a pedestrian-only space. Perhaps that has a different community value, um, because it's a different, because it's a different kind of space, so, and it's like a different square footage. So I don't know what other policies or permits are out there, cause that's not my day job, but. If there's information that could sort of get at like, addressing some of Commissioner Willidge's concerns too, I think that that could make it a more comprehensive. Approach. I don't think you should speak for yourselves, but I.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think you've been all hearing about parking is a huge issue.
Yeah.
Downtown, and so if you're gonna remove parking spots for the benefit of either a business or a person in a park, you're removing. The economic value from that spot. For every other business that that person that could park there could go visit. That's my main issue with it, aside from the safety issue, is that you're removing, you're basically removing part of a finite resource that we have.
But as a restaurant owner, I would be loathe to do that, to take away a, a parking space anyway, so. But I mean.
Right, but somebody wants to, cause somebody's bringing it up.
Yeah, no, yeah, you're right. So. No, that's a good point.
I, I will say that, you know, I appreciate the comments, uh, Vice Chair Noots, and we do, uh, as I think about the fee schedule. You may recall, Commissioner Schwartz, that we have a, a fee uh, for, you know, a permit for the full being used of a parking spot, so that might. Um, you know, potentially be a, an avenue that we would explore, and, and I, I will just be clear, we did do some outreach in the kind of policy formulation. Um, phase here with, with some new and existing uh, business owners and. Very few, if any, wanted to go into the parking area. Everybody wanted to be on the sidewalk area. This was really just, we don't know what we don't know about some of the people who may walk in the door. Um, and, and so we wanted to at least see if that was an, an option for you folks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if it's an o- an option, that's possible, but I, me personally, I. Well, I agree with you. Not want to go.
No, I, I agree with you, yeah.
But I also think like this is partly why it's administrative, because we have a very recent example of a downtown event. That some business owners did not want in front of their business, and other business owners were saying, yes, more please, right? Like some were saying, and you happen to be wearing the shirt for that event tonight.
Uh, yeah.
That took up almost all the parking, it sound like, right, for half of a day? Was it half of a day?
Hmm.
All morning, I think.
Number one.
So that's peak business for certain businesses downtown. Um, or peak business hours for certain businesses downtown. So I think if it was administrative as well, like those conversations potentially could happen at the staff level. As businesses come and go, to figure out like, okay, this is an area where it would be less favorable to have. Things happening in parking, public parking spots in this area, they really want to prioritize. Like those businesses are on board, um, potentially. Is what I'm thinking, based in, based on. How many days ago was that? Three, four days? Very recent, like information. That was a lot of parking spots. Hundred and eighty-some. How many, how many cars were down there? Hundred and eighty-something?
Uh, no, hundred and twenty-four.
Hundred and twenty-four, okay, that's a lot of parking spots. So.
What, maybe eight hundred people walking around?
So I mean, like sometimes taking up parking spaces brings more people walking around, which is good.
Sure, for an event.
I'm just saying like it's.
Plopping a park down in a parking spot.
There's actually data, did you know, there's actually data that supports. That people spend more money when there's more things like that downtown, cause it slows them down and then they.
Yeah, spend more time.
Yeah, spend more money.
Sure.
It's good for businesses, so, just saying, perhaps. Or just ride your bike. Or walk.
And I've seen that lost part, there was nothing going on. I wonder if we didn't have the fee high enough.
Yeah, that's the thing.
I'm waiting for a call from Laura.
I'll talk to the offline about that one.
Okay.
Um. Do you have?
Well, I think that like if we include that in the conversation, it could be useful because.
Yeah.
We do have events that have apparently a hundred and twenty-some cars downtown, so. It's not so robust.
Mr. Gager, do you have anything?
I think that's that's my whole direction of the need for received.
That's awesome. Alright, I'm gonna move this along then. Alright, let him do this along then. Alright, the next item. Uh, action item F ordinance thirty fifty-three in ordinance of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter ten of the Livingston. Livingston Municipal Code entitled miscellaneous, miscellaneous offenses. To modify section ten dash seven and ten dash eight to enable the consumption of alcohol. In certain permitted areas. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Cale. This item before you is a follow-up to the last item. And um, because it sounded like there was general um, approval amongst the commissioners to. Uh, allow the, the service and possession of open containers of alcohol. In uh, in certain areas of the public right of way, uh, staff has created ordinance three zero five three. Um, which as you can see, uh, just adds um, some certain language. Um, allowing the, the city to designate an area adjacent to existing businesses. Um, and uh, within the public right of way, uh, wherein possession and consumption of. Uh, of alcohol is permitted, and so I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, questions? Yes.
I saw that head shake. I know, it wasn't directed at me.
I just had a crick in my.
I'm curious, I'm curious what it is that we should know from the state and these. Um, folks that you might introduce to us that we should be thinking about, or we should know based on previous comments about open containers that we don't know?
You know, if you have specific questions for the state, I'm sure they would entertain them. I, you know, I would just point out, we very specifically included the, the verbiage. Adjacent to an existing business. Because that really, um, you know, uh, a, and I will. Please correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, but a, a, a permit allows for generally onsite consumption, on-premise consumption, I think. Is the phrase that they use or off-premise consumption. And in order for uh, it to be considered on-premise, it has to be, you know, either within the structure where the. Licenses or in the permitted area that's adjacent to that, and so. Um, because getting farther from that is a different class of license, whether it's a catering permit or, you know, some.
Okay, so we're talking about. Brick and mortars. That have had the permits. Whatever, the layout approved by the state. We're not talking about special events. We're not talking about street closure events.
No, those are dealt with under. Sub B of um, both ten dash seven and ten dash eight where it talks about special events in the two block. Um, area.
And we are not discussing that? Or we are discussing that?
Well, I hadn't intended to, uh, because I had not heard any um, complaints and it didn't necessarily tie into the sidewalk use. This was more limited to, you know, the existing brick and mortars who have those permits. That said, happy to entertain the conversation as it pertains to all that special events if uh, that's the, the desire.
Yeah, I think it's a sep- I feel like it's a separate. That's why I wanted to get clarity on what we're talking about tonight. As you said. Designated area not greater than two blocks, but that's what we're. Not talking about. We're only gonna talk about this thing as it pertains to public right of ways. And brick and mortars, okay? And there's nothing you would flag for us at this point? From your conversations with the state that we need to know before we go into this conversation?
Well, um, you know, I guess perhaps it, it may be worth some clarification on. On what the state likes to see as far as these designated areas adjacent to existing businesses, if that's something that's. Um, that, gosh, or Lisa, who might be interested in.
Come up so everybody can hear you and you're getting picked up by that camera too, that's great. Thank you so much.
Uh, my name is Deja.
Thank you, Deja.
That's okay, that's okay, I get that a lot. Uh, Alcohol Beverage Control Division, I'm the outreach and education coordinator. Um, what is allowed by the state for an alcoholic beverage? License is they can sell and serve on their licensed premises, which is basically a. Um, what they've sent into the state at application of where they've identified the sales and service and consumption. And it can include an outdoor area. And the interior and exterior, in interior portion and exterior area. Um, have to meet our suitability code, we have a um, uh. Uh, MCA Title sixteen code and also our administrative rules depending on the license type. So if it's an approved floor plan, then they're able to sell and serve in those designated areas. Um, if they want to sell outside and they um. It haven't been approved at their original license. At licensure, they can submit an alteration form. And um, alter their premises to add the outdoor area. And then it has to meet our suitability requirements as well. Uh, perimeter barriers, certain entrances, um, if the city um, needs a. A permit, we require that permit also to accompany that application. Um, and uh, if there's a building or health or fire. Um, if there's a building permit required, we need building health fire approvals as well.
Melissa, I think you have the floor, so. And I, but I don't wanna lose her. You go ask first and then we can do some other follow-ups.
So. You said it's a suitability code, so this approval is. It's like the license?
Potentially at licensure. When they get their license, yes.
Or after it's.
An alteration request.
How long does the license last?
Licenses last, um, their fiscal year and they have to renew. We're in the renewal process right now, so. July first through June thirtieth.
Okay, so if like the city had a permit for like a fee that was however many years. That would just roll into their next. License share. Yeah, okay, I just was wondering how, but you're doing it every year anyway, so.
We do. Yeah, and that is that like their license.
Thank you. They're like, they also have a license fee with the state.
Yes, every year.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Let's ask questions while we have Deja up here, so Commissioner Willidge, if you have a question.
I think I didn't quite hear something. Did you say perimeter barrier or permitted barrier?
Perimeter.
Perimeter barrier.
Like a rope line or something? Can be, but something, yeah.
Yes, and it, it doesn't have to be. It can vary. The perimeter barrier can vary based on anything like empty traffic. Um, like. Uh, like uh, for your sidewalk. Um, we, we don't want people coming off the street onto it. We wanna, we wanna see where the alcohol. You know, um, people are coming in and out of the um, license premises. Um, so it has to define the space and potentially um, impede the traffic.
So the in, the entrance to the. The area. Has to come from in the restroom, not from out on the sidewalk.
That, yes, that's correct. Yeah, immediately.
And so Deja, if we, as the city, didn't require. Barriers or perimeters. So let's say we had a restaurant that didn't have an alcohol license, you know, and, and we didn't require that, that could be an option, but. If that business comes to you and does have a li- have, does have an alcohol license, you at the state would require them to have the. Ballasters or the. Flower boxes or whatever it might be to, to designate the area. Other questions for Deja?
Yeah, now I do, now that you brought that up, I do. Um, I'm so curious, like. Because each city will probably has its own design standards. Like Missoula is real different probably than Billings. But I'm assuming that all those different barriers that are required by the two different municipalities are to. There must be some variation that you allow. Okay, so like that would probably be not an issue for us that. Staff could just work with you all as we figure out our. Design standards for downtown to make sure it would comply with the state.
Well, in, in this instance, whatever is required by the state will be required by.
Great, okay, but there's, it sounds like there's variation allowed.
Yes. Or it doesn't have to be a fence, it, it can, it can vary on materials.
Okay.
Um, we just, uh, it's a case by case basis.
Okay, great.
Define it, define it.
I just like can anticipate that that's gonna be a whole conversation. Barriers, so thank you. If we, if we set it up that way, if we set it up to be administrative.
I have one more question. Does the, does the state have requirements around? Whether there's. People are being served, like, you know, fine, I'll say more fine dining where. They're seated at a table, a waiter, which just comes, takes their order, brings them the food and the drinks, or if they go into the business. And maybe get it from inside the business and carry it out and sit at the ta- is there, um, does the state have rules and regulations around that?
Um. It depends on, okay, so most of the license types allow that to happen. Um, the restaurant beer and wine licenses, they're more restricted where they require table service.
Okay.
Um, that is the one license that is the most restrictive on promise license. Otherwise, other ones, it, it, the albez, the beer wines, um, even the breweries, people can go in, order and come out.
Okay.
Doesn't require food with it either, but the restaurant beer and wine licenses require food with a drink purchase. And also table service.
And that's something that you regulate.
Yes.
Just to get that on the public record, okay? Commissioners. I don't know that we have a motion yet. We do not, so are we ready to? Do a motion and then we can open up a poll comment?
Sure. I, I moved to approve first reading of Boarding Ordinance. Free zero five three and authorize the chair to some.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt, so let's go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Right, so by approving that ordinance three zero five three. Calling for a change to um, section ten dash seven, um, B. Um. Is this gonna be brought back in front of the commission for a optional change? Because the city may, uh. You know, this whole two, two blocks thing. Like, it doesn't state in here that this is um, an exception to the rule when it comes to um, events. And I know that you really, um, that the city is really sticking to code enforcement these days. We have a parade coming up. And we have a Christmas roll that have been happening for decades. And oh, by the way, the parade for a hundred years and we've never had an issue with um, with the whole. Two block thing. Because the police chief signs off on it, well. Nope, please do.
There's multiple consumption in more than the two block area of the parade. It's just impossible to enforce it with. Twelve officers and thousands of people.
Mr. Gager.
I, you know, I generally was just gonna say, maybe we'll let her. Have the four-minute public comment and then we can address any, any points after their chief, but uh. Appreciate it.
My point being, this is gonna be brought back up again because that's what the clip, the commissioners were asking. Prior to this going to a vote for this ordinance to, I mean, cuz that is. These are like here together versus separate. Um. Yeah, um, and anyway, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up is that, um, I traveled all over the state to different communities. And boy, are we changing things here in this cute little town. Um, Billings, uh, I'm sure that the police chief could get you numbers on this, but Billings put up those little, what do you call them, the little pop-up table? Little things in parking spaces failed miserably. They did have many incidences of cars. You know, hitting into these things. They actually put them up on these cute little like stages and then put the little tables on them, put little plants around them. Um, I believe they're, most of the ones that are on this one street that they had these outside restaurants on, they're gone. Um. So failed and succeeded in many other communities around our state, but uh. The parking spaces, um, you know, just not the greatest places, but now that we have these really wide sidewalks. And the businesses maybe making it clear for the local businesses because they actually have paid for the sidewalks. And they have to maintain the sidewalks, so how much of the sidewalk is theirs that they get to use versus what the city's in control of? Um, following the regulations which the mid does, by the way. Um, I really would like to um, pull B and, and bring it in front of the commission again, and I'm asking as. The um. The Chamber of Commerce, because this is, you know, something that should have the one little sentence in there, except for special events permits. For special events under permitted event, cuz, you know, for the parade and Christmas roll, but again. I will continue to bring this up and ask the commission if we can find somewhere to utilize the um. You know, the V I D bracelets into the factor of making it safe for the bars when we do have these events. Um, the bars uh, have all been very happy to use them. We will be supplying them through the DUI task force for free to them. So, you know, this is something that will only aid and benefit the police department in, you know. Scoping out the people that don't have them that maybe have a beer in their hand. You know, so anything that we can do to help the police department in curtailing some of this. Stuff, so thank you.
Interesting. Other public comments in the room? Being none, I'll ask if there's any public comments online.
Yes.
Go ahead, you give us your name, address, please.
Yes, I am Jennifer with Unwind and Jackpot at two eighteen South Main Street.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. So I do um, like the idea in the option of being available to. Have some small seating outside and to be able to follow the regulations set forth by Department of Revenue. Um. Uh, and I understand having an all beverage license and a beer and wine license and all of those things that. There is certain areas that you are alert, that you are allowed to sell. Um, well, we all know that we cannot sell outside. And, or do these big events all times of the year. Um. I, I would like to also entertain the, just the thought that. At our particular location, um, we have sidewalk, but we also have some side parking. And there's, I think, two or three spots that we are unable to use because. The O'Reilly's sign blocks some of that parking, and so, um. Giving a little bit of lenience again towards, you know, uh, case by case basis for. I guess the space that is oh, uh, being. Subject to approval. Um, also with all those things being said. I hope that everybody with these businesses downtown will honor and respect the. The regulations set forth with Department of Revenue and not selling outside if they have not been approved.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? Uh, okay, public comments is closed. So, we had a couple of questions, um. And I'm trying to. I can't feel the.
Obviously wants to stay at it. I can't feel the chance to edit it. And ten seven dash B, I know, I'm trying to figure that out too. And even if it's legal, I think she wants to start screaming because the parade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two blocks. I guess. Right. Which was unknown, but. Yeah, which was. Yeah, because here, yeah, because the.
Sorry folks, I just need a minute, so I'm going to take a minute.
Approaching on my horizontal time.
Yep, sorry. Because none of this is changed. Okay, Mr. Gager, I have, I have a question. I think that may. That may clarify a little bit of, of maybe what Leslie was talking about. As we're looking at ordinance thirty fifty three.
Yes.
The only, this is an ordinance that we have had in place, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what we are looking at amending is section one C. And then section ten dash eight C. Everything else in the ordinance is, it is as it has been. Is that correct?
That is correct. Only the underlined language is new and there is no strikeout language. Red line, except mine's black.
Yeah, mine is also black.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the non-underlined language is current.
If, it's current law, original has been for.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, the, the is new.
And it's changed to.
The two C.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Merge it one.
Yeah, um, okay. So thank you for that clarity because, and that's what we're voting on today. We're not voting on anything different because this is what's on the agenda for today.
Correct. That is correct, and, and really is, this modification was kind of tied to the last policy conversation. We're not contemplating any changes to uh, the possession of open containers or consumption of alcohol or marijuana. In events at this time. That said, that's a little good commission. Happy to uh, entertain those, those thoughts you may have.
Okay, thank you. All right, deliberation.
Can I ask to clarify? Just like, we've been out of compliance for a minute. Is the rest of this in compliance? That's not underlined? Like, how is, how does the state feel about, okay. If we need to wait and have a conversation, I, I would like it if this was in compliance with the state.
So.
And if this is a multi-step process, I understand.
Yeah, well, um, we have the ability with what is written to be in compliance with the state. I think what was alluded to in public comment is that um, certain event organizers or certain events. Maybe don't comply with the Livingston Municipal Code as far as the two block. Uh, we, we encourage compliance with the two blocks of open containers during a special event. But as the chief pointed out, uh, we don't necessarily have the resources in the Livingston Police Department to um. You know, start enforcing on and issuing tickets to everybody who may be out of compliance in large events such as. You know, say a parade in July, if you will.
Okay.
But I, you know, certainly, when events come in, I talk to the organizers about the requirements and. You know, the, the chamber and I have had at least two discussions this calendar year about the two blocks um, for events. And so we're, we're moving to find a pathway to compliance there, just as we are with the other issues to see.
So, but the ordinance itself is in compliance. That's what I'm most interested in today.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I understand.
Okay.
And to cer- to a certain extent. Bars, eh, 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 at some point, it also falls upon the person with the beer in their hands. And where they opt to wander and whether.
Mm-hmm.
Our good chief and his uh, staff or of police force see them and decide to do something about it.
Yeah, saying, you know, I, I guess I would just go back to, you know, a comment you've heard, you know, eh, enforcement's, you know, in my perspective is about education.
Mm-hmm.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, um, folks often don't know that they're not in compliance. And so. Um, and, and I would venture to say probably the vast majority of the city of Livingston does not know about the two block limitation on special events and on parade.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay, does that make it clear for folks? Okay, um, okay, deliberation, any, any deliberation comments?
State minimum should be our minimum.
Yeah.
I think.
Vice Attorney Newt. Um, I'm comfortable with this is written. I don't see a need to change or amend anything that's not underlined.
Mm-hmm.
Right now.
Okay. New yield?
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with, with that as well, um. I'm comfortable with the, with these changes additions, um, so that we can make sure that our businesses are in compliance with the state and with the city. Are we ready for a vote?
I am.
Yep, okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Kayle.
For.
Vice Attorney Newt for Commissioner Short for Commissioner Wills.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you to our friends from the state who's been here with us this whole evening. Sorry, we put this at the end of our agenda. So we are gonna, we are going to go to city manager.
Thinking the same thing.
City, city building, that's not a public right away.
Thank you commissioners, and I also apologize to our friends that I uh, structured the agenda in a manner that I did. Do better next time they're in town. Um, that said, I appreciate the commissions uh, work this evening. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we've got the US Army Corps and uh, other members of the Silver Jackets in town. Uh, will be on the levee uh, for the next ten days or so. They're in town monitoring water levels. Uh, and I would say, uh, the police or the stupid fire chief texted me at the start of the meeting and uh. Let me know that uh, earlier in the day, the, the team rescued eight, uh, eight boaters without life vests. From a tree in middle of Yellowstone. And so I would encourage all community members. If you're going to be in Yellowstone at this time of year, please at least wear a life vest, avoid downed trees. And recreate responsibly. This is our highest water time of year. And uh, and, and we're also quite busy on a lot of other calls. Happy everyone made it out. Thank you, Chief Chablowski and everyone involved.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Um. Long night. I want to go home. My yield, thank you.
Commissioner Short.
Ditto, I yield.
Vice Attorney Newt. Um, I want to bring up the. Something that Commissioner Shorts alluded to, which is large equipment downtown when we set up the B schedule. Um, I'm concerned that it's been in the same place for a very long time, which is negatively impacting probably the same businesses. For a good chunk of the summer so far. And if we need to adjust something in ordinance, I'm opening, open to that. Or in the schedule to make it more equitable for businesses. Um, I'm interested if there's anything you would want to share about the new parking signs in town. Based on our last, the last parking ordinance we did and the new signs that went up. Any updates about downtown parking?
Uh, yes, we have had, uh, we have added some clarification signs, um, generally speaking, below the two hour. Um, parking limitation, we've added that, uh, just to clarify that vehicles must be moved uh, to a new block after two hours. And uh, and, and those signs have been up more, will continue to go up into downtown uh, over the coming week.
Will you give us updates as there's things to update us on, like Tulsa's point?
Absolutely, uh, we've started electronic parking enforcement uh, in the last week and uh, starting with a fair amount of warnings. Um, but it, it seems to be working fairly smoothly at this point.
And last but not least on my list is, you were looking for ideas for the farmer's mark, farmer's market? One of your staff at the Christmas party brought an idea to me. I don't know if he ever told you, but he works in the solid waste department. And he thought. That bringing a garbage truck to a farmer's market for a demo could be a good educational opportunity for people who don't know how much space they take up. I can give you his name later, if you don't know who it is.
We'll have a brand name that doesn't.
I know, we're going to have new trucks and it was not my idea, it was one of your staff, but I think it's a really good idea and I would, I would second it.
I think it sounds great. We'll plan to take the new truck down to the farmer's market when it arrives.
Yeah, I'll let you know who the staff is, so maybe he can come.
I would love to know.
I'm not going to out him at a public meeting, so there you go. Yeah.
Yeah. I like public works, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Well, I'll remind everybody, first farmer's market is tomorrow uh, of the season, so that um, is happening. Uh, thank you to.
Do we have a tent? Is it noticed?
The tent will be there. We do not have a corner noticed.
But we can just don't, don't congregate in one area. I'll be there.
I'll be there to regulate.
I'll be around too.
You don't get a regular.
Don't all bring your trash at the same time. Um, I also would just like to thank Mr. Gager. And the rest of the commission, particularly Vice Attorney Newt, uh, for stepping in. Well, I had to get out of town for a while, so I really appreciate. Um, all of that and your support over that time. Uh, so thank you very much. And that is it for me. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Taking it.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Willet. This uh, meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at nine fifty-eight P M. Thank you.
Did you want us to vote? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye, now let's.
Now you voted. Now it's nine, it's still nine fifty-eight. I'm adjarring, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.